Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. And it is 7 o'clock and we are ready to start our Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. I will start the evening off with a roll call of commission members and then turn it over to the chair to formally start the meeting. Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Mike Rabulis.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matt Hotvogner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Inez St. James.
Here.
Mike Walsh.
Here.
Matthew Bando.
Here.
And for the record, James Ratcliffe notified us in advance that he would not be attending this evening, so he is absent.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Shannon. Good evening, everyone. This is Inez St. James, the Chair of Plan and Zoning Commission. We've been on break in August. This is the first meeting since break. Today is September 12, 2022, and we have a full agenda. So welcome, commissioners. Look at your calendar. We have one more meeting in September, October. Like, one meeting is on Wednesday instead of Monday. Just check your calendar. But anyhow, before we start with the items we have on our agenda, Scott, if you could read the roll call, that would be great.
Absolutely. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission notices hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, September 12, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. on the following application. Calco Construction, Inc., application for special permit for 11-lot cluster subdivision of 168 Copper Mine Road, R30 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting can be found on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of this proposal is online at the address on the screen as well, or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 25th day of August, 2022, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Inez St. James Chair.
Thank you, Scott. And for the record, alternates, we hope you are, you know, you're welcome, obviously, to ask questions, but you are not voting this evening. We have everyone, right, Shannon?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So thank you again and welcome. First thing we're going to cover, excuse me, are new business items before the public hearing. The first item in front of us is an application from Inspired by Opportunity LLC. And it's a site plan application regarding the property that's in Farmington and West Hartford for Wendy's near West Harfville. And who do we have?
I believe I saw Kimberly on the phone. I'm not sure who else they have participating.
So my name's, yep, Becky's with our team also. So my name's Kimberly Masewick, and I'm an engineer with BL Companies. I also have Pat Padlo and then Cody LaRue and Becky Feldman as well that have worked on this project with me. Am I actually able to screen share or?
No.
No? Okay. All right. That's okay. I just thought I would mark it up and we could kind of follow along, but. So we are here, in fact, for a site plan approval for redevelopment of this existing Wendy's restaurant on 331 South Road. And you can see this plan here shows us the proposed work in dark and the existing conditions are scaled back at a lighter gray scale. And the dividing line between the two districts or towns is right there. Yep. So Farmington is on the left, West Hartford is on the right. We've already done a lot of legwork with both towns regarding the permitting. Specifically for Farmington, we've been through the inland wetlands because there's a wetland way over on the left side here. And that thick, bold line is the upland review area that you see in that location. So we did go through that process. We also went to the ZBA because this is, in fact, a R20 residential district. And the parking is obviously associated with Wendy's, which is all located on the West Hartford side. So here we are tonight. We've gone and done the wetlands piece, the special use permit. We had that amended. So now we are back here again with you all. So essentially, what they're looking at doing is demolishing the existing facility, really to bring it up to date with current aesthetics, their current building image program, and kind of updating it. They do not need, right now, there's about 70 parking spaces and they don't need them. So we're going to be able to eliminate and have a significant reduction in the paving. But they're looking at reusing that existing entrance. It's an entrance only on the right-hand side that you see now. And they would come in and basically you'd have the drive-through lane and the bypass lane as well going into the parking. And again, that parking is, we got past that line. The building and everything is on, on West Hartford. Parking is on the Farmington side here. So we're actually pulling in right where Shannon's got her hand there. That edge of paving is coming in significantly on that edge there. So we're distancing the paving from that wetland, reducing overall impervious areas for both municipalities. And then we are proposing to relocate the exit only. So there's currently an exit only that's right there. Yep. So we're talking about shifting that down a couple of hundred feet to go in this location. And the reason we did that was really just to kind of like streamline the circulation for the restaurant. It was kind of circuitous before and we're able to just kind of go in, go out. It's easier for tractor-trailer trucks for the deliveries and whatnot on-site. So that will be good. And we're also getting some additional connectivity. We've added that sidewalk. That was a request for West Hartford, yep, to come up to the front of the building. So we included that. And a lot of the dumpster also is another improvement I wanted to point out. It's currently located in the top left, yep, right over there. And that was kind of something that came to light early on when we were just having informal discussions, that it was, you know, really not being properly maintained. And it was closer to the wetland. So now we're shifting it to that location behind the building. So it'll be screened by the building and it'll be completely enclosed and closer to the building, so, and in-sight. So, you know, it'll be better maintained. Stormwater management system on here actually is going to have a lot of improvements because right now there's only, there's two locations where stormwater, it's collected in catch basins. They don't have hoods or anything because it's a little bit older. And there's one discharge point, yep, all the way near the wetlands in the top left. And we're actually going to add some hydrodynamic separators, so water quality units, one there. And we'll establish that discharge point with some riprap and everything, so there's no erosion. So we'll improve that. And then over towards on the West Hartford side, we will be, there's like a discharge point way over there, a little bit farther. Yep, right there. That's an existing discharge point, but we're going to put in a water quality treatment unit before discharge. And then also we have some subsurface infiltration as well, the roof water, that we have been able to incorporate as well for that. The utilities are, we're going to reuse, you know, water. We can connect to gas. They're all readily available. One of the big points here is that there's an existing onsite septic system on the Farmington side. And we're going to have the opportunity to actually connect to the sewer on the Farmington side by extending it down along the roadway there a bit. So we are planning to connect to that. So that's another improvement. And then the site lighting will all be redone. So you're going to have, you know, LED fixtures. And we included a photometric plan for that. And we also have a lot of landscaping proposed, so that should be very aesthetically appealing, as you see the facility. Yeah, that was just a traffic management plan.
There we go.
Yeah, there you go. Yep. So you can see very, very heavily planted and landscaped because we have all this additional green space now. So we did add quite a bit there and tried to just duplicate, kind of replicate what was on the West Hartford side with that. So there's a mixture of trees. And if you ask me to quote them, I'll get it wrong. But there's a variety and there is a table at the top of this plan sheet that really outlines, you know, what plans that we've included in this plan here. And obviously, all the disturbed areas will be, you know, seeded and whatnot. So we will have that. And then do you have the architectural elevations as well, Shannon?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And, okay, so there you see it. And I'm not, I have a picture that Anna had sent me to share, but I didn't, I couldn't share. So here you see it in black and white, but essentially, this is like their new look. It's all hardy plank siding here. And this right here is what you're going to see from the street. So from South Road, there's all the fenestration. That's a requirement for, a newer requirement for drive-throughs on the, on the West Hartford side. So there's quite a bit of fenestration. And then that, that's the drive-through, the pay window, and then the, yep, right there, and then the pickup window. So those are on the backside of the building, so you won't be, won't be seeing those. And then you just have the other two ends, which are pretty straightforward. The one that faces the Farmington side is the second one there on the bottom is what, yeah, right there, yeah, the front elevation. So that's the one that faces the Farmington side. And I'm not sure if Anna is on here or not. She may be, I don't see her, but.
I am.
Oh, you are. So you must have my name. Okay, she said her name, that's why. But really, all, you know, a lot of improvements associated with this, with this proposed project. And we're really able to, you know, reduce the paving, improve on the stormwater management system aesthetically, big improvements, and just circulation and safety throughout the site. So we're pleased to be coming forward with it. I'll take any questions that you may have.
We're good. Okay. I don't know why I thought there'll be more people, but that's okay. Thank you very much. And you're right, the building looks completely different. And it will be more visible, right, being closer to the road now? All right, commissioners, let's do our questions. Patrick.
Yeah, first question I have is, you said there was a significant reduction in parkings. Can you walk me through that? I'm trying to follow it.
Sure. I don't know if you have the existing conditions plan, Shannon, that you can find in the beginning. All right, so if you zoom in on there and you can see all these paved parking spots with all the line work. So basically, the entrance, entrance only is all the way over to the right. And then there's a whole parking field over here. That's basically eliminated. And the building. And so the new building is actually a little bit less square footage than that existing one. And then you cross the line onto the Farmington side, and there's all these paved parking spaces here. And those are actually being reduced. We're pulling the edge of pavement more towards the West Hartford side on that edge. And then we are adding the exit to this side, but it's still like a net, net reduction from about 70 parking spaces to 34 here.
Oh, wow. So, yeah, so 70 to 34. And how many, so now the majority, actually, all the parkings are on the Farmington side now, right? Is that?
Right. Other than queuing, you know what I mean, the queue lane, but all the parkings basically on the other side. Yep.
And then why was this, why was this place designed with so many parkings to begin with? Is that?
I think it's just a change in the, in the times. You know what I mean? Like, literally, everything has been evolving and you've seen it more and more where, you know, people are picking it up and order it online and whatnot, and not really coming in and sitting down. And Anna can speak more to that if necessary.
Yeah, so the drive-through plays a big part in that because there's, you know. And then, well, that brings me to another question. The, so if they're picking it up, ordering it online, is, are there designated parkings for that?
Anna, I don't know if you have, we don't have any shown here. And I know that was one of the comments, I think, that Shannon or Bruce had made. And we certainly can do that. I just was unsure if Anna had like a specific three or something. You know, a lot of times there's usually three, two or three. So we could clearly put signage if that's what, you know, they need.
Yeah, and we typically have those in our restaurants. So, yeah, we cannot, we should be adding some.
Okay. Do you think it'll be right next to the handicap spots?
Probably, yes.
Yeah.
Somewhere close to the entrance.
Yep.
Can we, Kimberly, I'm sorry, Kimberly and Anna, can we get your full name and tech, because you logged in under Kimberly, so we don't have your name. We'll need it for the, for the record, please, in your title with Wendy's or the developer.
Yeah, Anna Belhank with the developer, and I'm a senior project engineer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, no more questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Mike Rabulis.
No real questions, obviously. Majority of this project is in West Hartford besides the parking. Just, the applicant's okay with all the engineering comments from the June 9 memo?
Yeah, so we did work through those, walked through them with Bruce, essentially, and they seem mostly like construction details. So that wasn't an issue. The only one that I did have a question on is that I think it was Shannon had mentioned the drive aisles to 24, but this is all one-way. And where you see that 23-foot mark, so I, we should be good. Yep. So see the one-way arrows? Yep. And then where it's two-way, it's 24, and we probably should put a label on that, just so that you know.
Okay, because this is two-way here. Right, because they get stuck. Okay.
Yep.
And there's do-not-enter signs here, then?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Scott?
I don't have any additional questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Matt?
So during construction, will there be road closures on South Road? And if so, how will that look and the timing of that?
So we shouldn't have to do like a road closure because we're reusing, we're only on that very small portion right there, you know, connecting into the road. So we should be able to have just traffic management plans to go around there. As needed. Yeah, that's a little bit easier to see. So the right side is easy because that's really just reusing existing. The left side is a little bit different. And we'll have to, you know, get more into, into the timing of the construction phase. But you shouldn't need to close it. There's actually like two lanes there right now. One is for, you know, the main lane, and then it goes down to the dedicated turn lane. It's starting right there to whittle down from like three lanes, which were two lanes and a right turn for the first mall entrance. And it's whittling down to the two lanes, which is one straight and one dedicated right for the second mall entrance. So we should be able to work around that and not have to close it.
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying the closing, but will only one side go at a time, like queuing, right, where someone puts the slow and the stop? Is that happening?
I'm not sure I get what you're referring to.
So like, you know, if you're on the right, the right side, cars have to stop because there's only one lane to pass through. Is that happening?
Um, Anna, I don't know if Anna has like a specific.
That's what I thought I saw in the plans, but maybe I missed, missed.
I mean, the right side is going to.
I think it was the two on the next page.
Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah.
The traffic management plan? Okay.
I was just trying to, like, how to think about that in terms of drivers on South Road.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And we can, this is for really like the sewer extension.
Okay.
Piece down here.
No, no, I assume it's a busy area, so I'm just curious the cadence of, you know, when the construction would be and when cars are queuing up. And, you know, if it's, you know, the middle of December here where it's a busy time around the mall, it was just something I was thinking about.
Anna, do you have any, I mean, we have to go through, we still have to go through permitting on like the whole West Hartford side. So I anticipate that's going to be throughout the whole winter on that. So you shouldn't, you know, you won't be hitting the mall, like you're saying, at busy, busy time, which is good. So it shouldn't, shouldn't coincide with that. And as we get through and do more construction detailing with the plans, we can certainly, you know, keep, keep that in mind about the phasing. And I'm not sure if the applicant is going to want to try and really phase the work to keep that existing building as much as possible, or just close down, do the work, and reopen. And that's something Anna might be able to speak to.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna close the, and rebuild.
Okay.
Matt, any more? Go ahead.
No additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Liz?
No, I think all my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Walsh?
No questions.
Thank you. And Matthew?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
All right. I don't know what the hours are. Just curious if the hours are changing when the new building is open.
Hours of operation?
Yeah.
Um, what we would like, usually on other restaurants, we have from, because we serve breakfast, and we would like to have from 7:00 a.m. to maybe 11:00 to midnight. That's what we would like. I don't know if there's any restrictions with the city about timings, because sometimes there's some, the ordinance calls for some timings, but anyway, that's what we would like.
But that's fine. Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, what, what you're proposing, the 7:00 to 11:00 is fine. I was just thinking about, there are some homes right nearby on the Farmington side. A little past the light though, right?
It's past, it's on the other side.
Backing into the highway. I'm just thinking out loud. Okay.
Or over here where Woodruff is, but on the other side of the 84.
Yeah, okay.
And it is separated by a wooded, you know, big wooded area, that wetland that shouldn't be touched, so.
And is it a drive-through now or no?
No.
Okay. Okay. So the idea is more people, you'll get more business, right, by adding the drive-through? And hopefully, majority of your business will be that way. I'm just thinking of traffic, but it sounds like you have plenty of space to queue up the traffic. You're moving down the exit. That parking lot almost feels like you should be exiting further than where you are right now, anyway. So that's probably good. Yeah, I don't have any other questions. And the building looks great. All right, commissioners, do you have any last-minute questions before we? Oh, go ahead.
I just, if I can, this is Shannon Rutherford again. Just to comment on the maintenance and production of traffic for the sewer connection. The sewer connection is going to require a Town of Farmington sewer permit and a road opening permit with the Town of Farmington. Both of those then will be coordinated with our engineering and public works departments. And there are specifications with respect to timing of opening and time of year and requirements to have police protection if they are going to have it down to one lane and not be able to maintain two-way traffic. So it is, it's definitely going to have additional oversight. So that's all I had to add.
So do we need to, is it too generic to say that the condition will be that applicant will work with the town and to the satisfaction of the town? Or do we need to add?
I don't think, they absolutely cannot put a shovel in the ground and that right away without having a permit. And it's going to come through for our building permit process, so it's going to get connected automatically as soon as they come in for the building permit.
So what we are voting on today, we're okay. You're just letting them know?
I'm just trying to answer the question that had been raised about how, you know, concern about timing and.
South Road.
South Road. So at no point would I envision us saying, sure, go ahead and put the sewer in in December or January. So it just wouldn't, I don't foresee that happening.
Thank you for that, Shannon.
Absolutely. Yeah. And applicant, any comments on that or you're good?
We're okay with that. We're expecting to, our plan is to start construction sometime in the spring. We, yeah, we don't have much building in the winter.
Yeah, you're not doing the excavation that time of year because you can't patch.
Yeah.
You won't be able to patch it, so it's not going to happen in the winter.
Okay, so everyone is on notice? All right. All right, commissioners, any other last-minute questions before we have a motion and vote on this item? Okay, we are good. A little rusty today, huh? For me. Speaking for me. All right, so commissioners, we need a motion in a second, please.
Okay, yeah, Patrick Carrier, excuse me. Before I make the motion, so we addressed the June 9, 2022, engineering comments. So we addressed that and also the drive aisles. But another item for consideration on our agenda review was the traffic impact statement and how it should be, it should be revised to reflect the actual traffic. Is that something that we need, we should make a motion on? I mean, that we should put a condition of, or?
Again, you can see, I don't know if the applicant has any comment for that. They have it, they didn't address it in their presentation. So I don't know. Kimberly, do you have anything to say regarding that?
So I do have Pat Padlo on here, but I think the crux of it was like whether we, you know, are going to go by ITE for trip generation or use existing counts. And I'll let Pat speak more to that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pat Padlo, and I am professional traffic operational engineer for BL Companies. And I was the one who did the original traffic, maybe not a study, but definitely an overview. And for, for the overview itself, we utilized ITE Trip Generation Manual. And if I can point out to one fact, we utilize two different land use categories. One for fast food restaurant with a drive-through window and one for a fast food restaurant without a drive-through window. And the crux of it all is the sample size. The one for the one, the one for the, for the fast food restaurant with a drive-through window has over 90 studies or sample size versus the one without has only a few. Let me see, I have those stats here somewhere. Eight studies for, for example, for PM, three studies for AM, and six studies for overall. So there's hardly any sample sizing. So when you compare those two with the same or even, or slightly reduced footprint, the volumes will not change much. The, the statement of it all is that overall, the, the site generated volumes pretty much stay the same. The differences are minor.
Yeah, I remember now just reviewing this. It's been a few days because, you know, the one thing that I thought about was the numbers almost seem like they're decreasing. So why would Wendy's want to even do this project if they're expecting less business, right? Yeah, the traffic studies are always off anyway, in my opinion, but, I don't know, Shannon, what do you think?
I think it's, my point is, I don't think that it was an accurate information, an accurate document. I understand ITE. I've worked with it for years. My point was to try to get something accurate for the record so that we had it for our files. I don't think it's going to be an issue. I don't think we're going to see an exponential swing in traffic one way or the other with this change. But I would highly doubt that this project is being embarked upon to see a decrease in traffic as was represented. So, so that, that was my only point. If the commission wants to make a condition so that we have an updated document for the records, that's fine. If not, I don't think, from a functional operations standpoint, I would anticipate an issue here. So it's up to you folks.
Oh, thank you. So Patrick, since you asked the question, and I know you're going to be making the motion, how important is, is this documentation? I mean, the building is in West Hartford. The parking lot is in Farmington.
Yeah, so the way I would answer that is I just bring it up. I guess I would, I guess I would kind of lean on the rest of the commission as well on that point. So I brought it up more just because it's mentioned there.
Yep, okay. That's fair. Thank you. And thank you for catching that before we actually voted. Mike Rabulis, do you want to see an updated document on traffic? Mike Rubulis, do you wanna see an updated document on traffic?
Um, hey, can we add a condition that the uh, an updated document be put in with the uh, the file to the satisfaction of town staff?
I think that's a fair condition. Scott, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree with that, I think, sounds like it's something Shannon would like to have there, I think it makes sense.
Matt?
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense. Cause, just a quick question. How, how many cars can queue up in the drive-through line, lane?
Um, I can't remember what our final number was, Cody, do you know off the top of your head?
Wasn't it ten?
I think it, I think we had, I thought we had one more than that, but we changed it so many times after virtually.
Okay, thank you.
It's on the site plan, there you go.
Thank you. So, I'm good with this.
Yeah, yeah, okay, hold on, Shannon's checking anyway.
It looks like eleven.
Yeah.
There you go, now we can see him.
Oh, yeah, one, two. To the first window, nine to the second window, and ten and eleven after the window.
Got it.
Okay, so you're for adding a document, Matt?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you, and Liz? Seems like a logical addition. All right, Mike? W?
Yeah, just as a condition, I'm fine with that.
All right, and Matthew?
Agreed, as a condition.
All right, so uh, Patrick?
All right, so, again, the engineering that, that's, that was all covered in the aisle, so, okay, sounds good. So, I like, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make the motion um, to approve the site plan application by Inspired by Opportunity LLC regarding the reconfiguration of Wendy's site at three thirty-one South Road with the following condition, that an updated traffic impact statement be provided to the town staff, to town staff for their files.
Yeah, engineering comments?
Oh, do you want me to do the enj, okay, so.
Yeah, add that in as a condition, please.
Yeah, okay, and then a second condition, that all the engineering comments from the June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, uh, be addressed at the satisfaction of town staff.
Okay. Sounds good, all right, I need a second, please.
Scott Hall stood a second.
All right, does everyone know what we're voting for, huh? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? All right, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, the next item that we have is a sign application uh, from Art Facts uh, for property located at Six Park Pond Place in Univille.
Shady.
All right, on, on the bottom, maybe?
No.
No?
Yeah, yes, but no.
Okay. All right, is there anyone online? Is that who you were expecting, or?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I don't mind, shall we just continue for a minute, or?
Yeah, maybe.
Don't join, or?
Yeah, I know, I know, this has to get done, though, there was already an issue with, it was already, they didn't anticipate having to do this. You know what, let's go ahead and go to the other ones, let me see if I can track somebody down.
Sounds good, yeah, so the, so the next several are all applications that we are accepting this evening for hearings in October, so we should be able to run up, hello? No? Okay, all right, so uh, Patrick, if you can uh, do the first motion for N H R Construction, please.
Yep, Patrick Carrier, um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by N H R Construction LLC for a special permit for accessory apartment located at ten Red Coat Lane in an R thirty open space zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, we're good. All right, next one?
Um, yep, I, Patrick Carrier again, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Brian Rodriguez. What was that? Oh, Byron, oh yeah, sorry about that, Byron Rodriguez. Um, for special permit for expansion of home in excess of five thousand square feet um, of home located at nine Apple Tree Lane in an R forty zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, and second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, all right, that's accepted, thank you. The next one is application from Steve Joseph, go ahead, Patrick.
Okay, yeah, so, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Steve Joseph for special permit for home business for retail sales and classes related to custom jewelry made on-site and sale of men's clothing and accessories located at fifty-five Lovely Street in an R twenty dash R twelve zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second, please?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, we're good. All right, the next application is from Louis Cohen.
Okay, yep, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Louis Cohen, Cohen, for special permit to raise chickens twenty at one fifty-six Red Coat Hill Road in an R twenty zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, we're good, and the last new business item for us to accept this evening is an application from Legacy Church.
It's gonna be a busy night, huh?
Wow.
All right, so Patrick here, I'd like to make a motion to accept an application by Legacy Church for a special permit and site plan modification for church use at fifteen Executive Drive in an, in a C R zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, all right, nice job, thank you, Patrick Liz team, that was good. All right, Shannon, do we have the applicant from Art Facts?
I keep waiting for the notification. I was able to get in touch with somebody, they are going to call right in, so there was a miscommunication on their end. Um, I can briefly, uh, again, so we'll go, we'll just go to public hearing one, for the record. We did receive a letter from the applicant's engineer on their behalf withdrawing that application, um, as I'd indicated to the um, to everyone in the agenda review, uh, there were wetlands discovered within a hundred fifty feet of work to be proposed, so they had to uh, they had to go ahead and, and um, withdraw, and they're gonna apply to wetlands, and then they will be back to us, so it's not gone for good, it's just gone for now.
All right, so no career presentation this evening, okay?
Correct, so.
Just waiting for one more, and um, okay, so yeah, October, um, in all seriousness, October is going to be busy, we have two meetings in October, one in November and one in December, so I'm sure whoever wants to submit whatever will be doing that quickly.
There we go.
So, stay healthy, everyone. We're good, oh.
Yeah, Lauren, I'm gonna promote you to panelist, so if you accept that, then you'll be able to. All right, Lauren, there you go. Okay, Lauren, if you unmute your microphone, then you should be able to address the commission.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go, all right.
First, I want to apologize, my uh, my good uh, a, attorney employee forgot about the meeting. Um, so of course, it leaves me the owner. Um, yeah, so with Ampurna, we had designed this uh, sign uh, according to his logo some time ago. And uh, I'll explain the sign. Uh, individual letters that will be um, computer cut out of half-inch acrylic and sprayed with low luster epoxy. Ampurna has an inset of orange and an outline of uh, white. They're stud-mounted with a standoff. It's board and batten, so we'll stand it off at least uh, as far as the batten and uh, then some. Uh, Indian farmer's market is simply um, white. So there's a bit of a diagram that gives a little more detail. Um, signed by the road, you know, we had of course come in with a new look for uh, uh, this market and uh, you know, the look was kind of beautiful. With this, there, there was a budget and uh, we're going to use the existing structure and simply reface at the uh, same square footage as existing. We're using a composite board um, that's six millimeters, which is a quarter inch, that's framed out with a U-channel. Um, lettering is simply um, uh, an inkjet uh, printed with um, a UV lamination um, tight resolution. Uh, pretty much looks like hand-painted or vinyl. And um, uses the existing posts, which are actually in pretty good condition. The lighting, um, I believe right now is LED and um, it's a thirty-five hundred Kelvin which will also be positioned on the building by uh, someone else, we had given a proposal to do the lighting. And uh, I think he has somebody in mind to uh, to do the lighting on the building sign. There was a third sign that was a bit up the drive and he decided not to pursue it. So, that is no longer in existence and it'll uh, just be these two signs. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, it's pretty simple and straightforward.
Thank you very much for joining us, and uh, no worries, and let's go through the uh, questions. Patrick, questions for the applicant?
Oh yeah, just the first thing, um, so in reading the agenda review, it, it was mentioning that there was no um, there was no lighting on the building proposed.
Uh, it was just. Yeah, no, there's, there's none right now, I think in the future there will be, I just, I, I can't identify it and it's not on the table right now.
And, and that's something that, um, Shannon, that they would have to come back for, correct?
Cor, correct, so any, any lighting for the attached sign will require review uh, with TP, at, at a minimum with staff and likely at least uh, TPZ at least under planner's report, so, yes.
Okay.
Uh, absolutely, and um, I will remind our client uh, Niraj, that that's imperative. We had proposed one of our custom-made uh, strip fixtures that's uh, a thirteen footer with no seam. Uh, nice, it was thirty-five hundred Kelvin, but they're not cheap.
Okay, okay.
All right. Another question is the, um, so the lighting on the um, detached sign, that is to say they look identical, is it, are you using just the same light?
Uh, yeah, we haven't changed it, we're just recouping what's there.
Okay, and then it's, it's, you mentioned thirty-five hundred, so.
It was approved in the previous uh, permit.
Okay, so same light. Um, the only other, the only other question was the, the height, so that the sign is con, conforming in size, other than the height? So there.
Yeah, I think what brings it over the height would be the finials.
Okay. And then, and so that's not an issue to, you're talking about those little balls, is that what it is on top of?
Yeah.
So, so is that, that's not an issue to bring it, so it conforms with the height, it's a four inches, is that something that, it's just a matter of lowering the sign on the posts?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, um, no other questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Uh, Patrick, have my only questions, I am all set, thank you.
All right, thank you, Scott?
I'm all set as well, thank you.
All right, Matt?
I'm all set, thank you.
Sure, Liz?
All set, thanks.
All right, Mike, W?
No questions.
And uh, Matthew?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Just curious, uh, does that uh, name, Ampurna, mean something?
Uh, you know, if I was diligent and a little more plugged in, I probably should have studied it. I, I would imagine there's some significance, but what that significance is, uh, I, I don't know. What I do like is the uh, farmer's market.
Hmm, having it local, right, year-round?
Yeah, no, I mean, he's, he's sourcing stuff, definitely, and I think um, if I'm not mistaken, he has another operation in uh, East Hartford that's been very successful.
When is this business uh, planned to open?
Uh, if, if you had to ask me, I would have told you uh, a month ago or two months ago. I, I think soon, I think there's probably some issue with getting freezers in and some of the mechanical stuff. You know, just a byproduct of today's world and the uh, what inventory is available.
Makes sense, all right, thank you, thank you for uh, answering our questions, commissioners, any last minute questions for our applicant? All right, we're good, all right, we need a motion and a second, please.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, so, so um, again, no conditions, right, would I just say, I mean, everything was pretty well covered in the uh, presentation, if I say as presented?
That's fine, yep, as presented, it'll work, thank you, Patrick.
Okay. All right, so Patrick here, I'd like to make a motion uh, to approve the sign application by Art Facts um, for property located at six Park Pond Place um, as presented.
All right, and a second, please?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All right, any discussion? It's pretty straightforward, right? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, all right, it's unanimous, thank you for.
Yeah, sorry for being late.
No problem, thanks for calling.
It all worked out, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, you too. Okay, on to the public hearing portion, so we have one, right?
There's one public hearing.
All right, let me get my pages together.
Yeah, me too.
Oh my gosh, give me a month off and look what happens, all right, so um.
I believe we have Steve Judas.
Okay.
Brian Panico, I got somebody.
Yeah, no, no problem, so we have uh, we, we're gonna have someone from Calco Construction or a member of, represent, um, excuse me, um, giving us an overview of uh, what is being planned on one six, or at one sixty-eight Coppermine Road. Um, so the way it works for folks that may have called in for this application is that the applicant presents uh, to the commission, commissioners have a chance to ask questions of the applicant. When the commissions are done asking questions, um, we uh, the, excuse me, at that point, we'll, we'll let you know when uh, we will uh, turn it over to the public to hear comments from anyone that may have called in. And um, yeah, let's get it going. So who do we have?
All right, for the record, um, my name is Brian Panico, I'm with Harry Colson, eight seven six South Main Street in Plansville, uh, on behalf of Calco Construction, we're the project engineers. So, project before you is for one sixty-eight Coppermine Road, uh, it's zoned, R thirty residential, total area of this uh, property is fourteen point three nine acres. Um, currently, the. Currently, the, or at one point, the project, the property had a single family house. Currently, there's a barn still out there, some outbuildings, a lot of farm debris. Lot is mostly wooded on the west side, which includes some wetlands and cleared on the eastern side. Residential property surrounds the parcel to the east, west and the north. And then we have Coppermine Road to the south. Their proposal is for a R30 cluster subdivision. So we have 11 lots. And with the cluster subdivision, as the open space portion of that, we have 8.41 acres of open space primarily on the western side of that piece and then a small chunk to the north. That encompasses and protects almost the entire, or does encompass the entire portion of wetlands as well as quite a bit of upland review area and our two detention basins. Of that open space area, about four acres of it is wetland and about 4.35 acres is non-wetland. There is a cul-de-sac off of Coppermine Road that will serve all 11 lots. And what we had done for the detention on this site, we worked very closely with town staff through a kind of very vigorous wetlands process to make sure and ensure the best possible storm drainage product that we could come up with. So the area split at a high point in the road. So we have a lot of that water coming, going north to the cul-de-sac. And then about an equal amount of that water coming south to a low point where it discharges into the other basin. What this does is it allows a more even flow of storm water. And these basins are relatively shallow, just very, very large to allow for maximum water quality, maximum infiltration potential. And then the most groundwater recharge to keep feeding wetlands and not impact anybody downstream. We do, we add very little tree clearing and such. So with this cluster being that, you know, we're trying to keep as much open space as possible and protect as much natural resource as possible. This was the best possible design scenario. We took that road, we shifted it as far to the east as we could minimize those lot areas, but at the same time maximizing the amount of open space that we could then provide. Conventional layout that was supplied with this application had that road further to the west. There was a much larger, much larger lots in retrospect, as these are, because this is a R30 cluster, so 15,000 is the minimum. But larger lots, which then impacted more of that upland review area, more of the wetlands left only about 3.85 acres of open space and then 3.2 of that 3.85 was all wetland. So in this case, we're providing a little bit more upland area as open space and still trying to kind of maximize what we're protecting, giving back and still produce a product that is appealing to the neighborhood as well. So other consideration on this project, big factor, we went back and forth with town staff quite a bit. Elevations, this project had previously was submitted previously. Never made it, I believe, out of the wetland process. There was a lot of question and concern. We have spent the better part of about a year or two on this process redesigning it, coming up with the best possible product we can, working with town staff. So appreciate Shannon and Bruce for the many, many, many sets of revisions and back and forth changes on this. But in the end, we have an 11 overall, an 11 lot subdivision meets all of the Town of Farmington's requirements from a subdivision zoning perspective for a R30 cluster. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, Commissioners, Patrick?
Yeah, so what is the, so lot number one? What does that, that tree line look like? So that's an existing tree line there?
Correct. So we have, there's a portion of basically the site from where the driveway entrance is, which is cleared already. And then as you work your way back, work backward, there is some open field areas. And then as we start to get all the way to the east, that's where we're actually proposing to clear for, for a lot of those lots.
Okay, so, so existing now, lot one has trees on it?
Correct.
Okay. And then, and just curious, like, because obviously now that there's, there's gonna be very little left in between the existing home. Is that, are those bigger? Is there gonna be any buffer at all, like with, with the trees that are left? Once they're cut? I mean, I'm sure you've been out there and you're familiar with it.
Yeah, so I don't know that I would say that there will be a very thick buffer. It is relatively best way to put it, older tree, older forested area in some of those sections. So the trees are a little bit larger, the growth is a little bit higher. There is some underbrush and stuff out there. More or less, there is, there's quite a bit of grade change. But I'm not 100% sure if that's right directly between lot one. I think it might be a little to the north of lot one where it starts to kind of slope up quite a bit. Shannon, if you have the I think that phasing plan, I don't know if that's, if you have that in the as part of the set. Because that showed kind of our clearing and what was to be cleared and when. At least it's probably the best clearest representation.
This one? Construction? Is this the one you're looking for, Brian?
Yeah, so that, yeah, so that's probably a good example. So you can see kind of the, the hatched area here. Lot one has, there's a tree line that's on lot one. And that kind, there's kind of a pocket in there. So we're not, we're not necessarily taking out the trees up to the property line. That's, that's how it is already. But we are removing a good portion of the trees, kind of that are in the middle of that lot. I'm sure, you know, some supplemental planting, if need be, is something that's reasonable. Like along that line, as you move further, like behind lots two, three, four, et cetera, there's nothing actually back behind there from a residential perspective, but that's a good place.
Okay, yeah, great. No, that's kind of what I was getting at. Thank you. No, no more questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
Honestly, I think a lot of my questions were answered in the inlands and wetlands conditions of approval. They're pretty extensive and as far as their approval goes, you guys have obviously been working with the town quite a bit because these engineering comments are very short compared to what we usually get. There's no issue from the applicant with the remainder of these engineering comments dated August 10.
Yeah, so the
Nevermind. I see your response now. Sorry, just didn't click on it. And so these are all set, all these engineering comments?
Yeah, and so we actually got comments back September 9th as well. Shannon, and I did go through those. It looked like it was mostly just a lot of note changes in some wording, changing things around. And we did review all of those outstanding comments and don't have any issue with making those modifications, so.
Okay, I think there was an update that slid in on Friday, so. Yes, but it there, it's nothing new. It's just an evolution of the comments back and forth.
At this time, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, how about Scott?
Thanks, Inez. So as I understand it, there's some water issues in some of the surrounding neighborhoods. You don't anticipate that this project, that you've got a plan that will keep the water contained to this project?
Yes, so that was the biggest portion of the back and forth with town staff. And that's in fact why we have such large basins. So we looked at this not only from a meeting Ziro perspective, so zero increase in runoff, but also volumetrically, you know, how much runoff, you know, existing conditions was coming off of this project and what's the volume of runoff post-development. And so what we did was we enlarged those ponds. We went out and did additional soil testing to check for infiltration rates. And we basically sized those ponds accordingly to make sure that now our, our volume is actually reduced. So for example, existing there was 255,000 plus or minus cubic feet of runoff from the site. Now with the size of these basins, we're at 212,000. So we have a reduction of 43,000 cubic feet of stormwater runoff at that 100-year storm event. And obviously that trickles down through the smaller storms as well. So and then not only that, but we, prior to post-wetlands, prior to our submittal to planning and zoning, we went through, we raised the road as well, raised basement foundations, footings, all of those things to make sure footing drains wouldn't be an issue. There are no sump pumps now required, lowered the drainage system. So we're very confident at this point that all of those potential issues are addressed.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And the catch basins, is there like a maintenance plan for those? Because I know over time they can get clogged and not work as effectively. Is there a maintenance plan around that?
Yeah, so as part of our stormwater management plan, we provide a maintenance schedule through and then after that, it continues on. There's dates and times of the year that those have to be cleaned and all that followed through as well.
Okay, thanks so much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Good questions. Matt?
Yeah, thanks. Just along the sort of catch basin lines. So for those property owners on sort of the left side of this page, what do those look like from their backyard? Are they enclosed? Is there fencing? Is it natural? Just can lay that out for me?
For, I'm sorry, for the detention basins?
Yes.
So the detention basins are very shallow. And so they'll be, they will be grass. And they're currently, everything is designed, everything is designed as a walkout on that backside. So it does sit up quite high and then everything will slope down in that direction. Detention basins are probably about two feet lower than the kind of grade out there. And then Shannon, I don't know if you want to go to kind of like the site development plan portion of that, so we can kind of look. You know, we do have all of our, you know, kind of markers out there designating all of that as conservation and open space. I mean, is the, are we looking for like a physical, more of a physical barrier? I guess is the question. We're, basically the intent was to leave it, you know, as natural, still as natural looking as possible.
No, I wasn't, I was just, I was just asking, I wasn't leading into anything.
Okay.
Now, back to, so the Commissioner Carrier's question earlier, could you just walk through, you know, lot one there and how it looks today and how, what will change besides the house going there? Like, is it, it's an open field now and there's no, it's not trees?
So currently, there is portions of it that are open fields with kind of sections. So that's perfect, Shannon. Thank you. And those areas that look like open fields right now are kind of have started, started to grow up. They're kind of kind of thick underbrushy growth right now. But basically, all of the tree line that you see on the west, western side, we're maintaining as much of that as humanly possible. We have a small, small section of that being cut out for the enlargement of that, of one of those, of that southern detention basin. But the rest of that tree line remains. And then the, where it almost kind of crosses there, that portion will be removed as well. And then to the north for a portion, probably about where that pointer is now, that'll be the limit of clearing there. So there is still a buffer on the northern portion of that to the other residential neighborhood. And that's all open space.
And, and these are gonna be all market rate homes and do you have, is there like a price range in mind at this point in the process?
I don't know that there was a price range in mind, but these will be market rate, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm good, Inez. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Liz?
I think most of my questions have been answered. My concern was the ongoing maintenance of the drainage areas and just reading some of the comments, letters and other things that have come in that they seem to get put in and then get neglected and cease to function as designed. So I was just curious about how how, what is the, the ongoing maintenance plan for those sort of facilities?
Yeah, and so Shannon, I don't remember, this is going to be, because this is a public road. So as far as the catch basins are concerned, once the applicant has fully developed it, the, the the plan and has built these basins in accordance with the Town of Farmington specifications and everybody is comfortable and happy with that process, they'll clean out those detention basins and then it would be a town maintained road. So that would be maintained as well. These basins, they're, they're not overly complex. You know, we try to avoid too many, you know, measures. We, just because it is harder to maintain at that point. So in this case, we have riprap berms at the outlets and at the inlets. So we're providing some storage area so that you have some sediment filtration there and then some sediment filtration in the main portions of the basin. Those are fairly simple to maintain. I believe all, all the hoods, all of these catch basins were required to have hoods on them, which provides a little bit of additional support there as well. And then everything else is just grass. And we have a nice little access road that comes in off of the cul-de-sac. So it's easily, easy to get to, easy to maintain, easily mowed. And then everything around the basin, you know, is kind of all of that portion, the goal is really to have that almost turned into back into a wetland area. So we're hoping that, you know, with this design, you know, not only does it continue to feed that wetland, but hopefully it'll allow for even more wetland creation, more habitat creation on the other sides of those basins. That's why we keep them typically closer and that's why we didn't want to remove any trees or as, excuse me, as few trees as possible. So the lower portions of those basins are basically the eastern or western sides of those really should have almost no maintenance. It would just be the basins themselves that would need to be maintained.
Okay, thank you. That answers my questions.
Thank you, Liz. Mike W?
No questions.
Thank you. And Matthew?
Most of the questions I had were about wetlands and water control. And I think those have been touched upon pretty substantially. Being that this is a public road, is, is there a plan for a stop sign here?
Yes, so there would be a stop sign in the stop bar at the end of, at the intersection, yes.
Okay, that's, okay, that's pretty much everything I have.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, I have some questions, please. I just want to confirm, you're not installing any sump pumps, correct?
Correct. We have currently designed the plan so that no sump Correct. We have currently designed the plan so that no sump pumps are required on any of these units.
Great, great. I I that's awesome. Thank you. Communication. So everybody was or abouters were notified, Shannon?
Uh, yes, that's been verified.
That's been verified. Okay, great. I know we have received correspondence. I don't know if the applicant has seen it.
I believe, yes, it was sent to the commission members and I have it here for sharing if you're if you're done with your
Okay, yeah.
questions and comments and we
I got a couple more things. Can you explain the phases, please? Or and and maybe the timing?
Sure. And I don't know if John is on at the moment as far as timing goes. So I'll kind of touch on the best the best I can, at least from the phases. So from a phasing perspective, the way that this has been set up, working directly with town staff and their recommendations, is that in phase one, we have the kind of crosshatched area shown as what is the area to be cleared. And so what we've gone ahead and done in this with this phasing plan is basically say, you know, we're not going to clear cut the entire site all at once and then start working on six different things at the same time. Being that there is such a large wetland to the west and it's such a sensitive area from a drainage perspective, the there will be very limited tree clearing. And then the first thing to be done is basically to install those two detention basins, construct them, put up all the silt fence. Then we have silt fence proposed on the uphill side of those as well, which will be installed. Once those are complete, that whole area would be would be stabilized. And what happens at that point is now we have basically two levels of protection. We have a level of protection to the wetlands from those basins. And then we have a level of protection from the next phase of work area to those detention basins so that those detention basins basically don't get filled with sediment or the sediment that enters them is then going to overflow into the wells. The second phase of this would then be to construct the road. So we have very defined limits of clearing as far as what's going to be cleared and what should be cleared during phase two, which is basically an envelope of the road large enough to get that grading all done with the raising and the lowering of the road. And then all the utilities would be installed, storm drainage, water, sewer, gas, if there's going to be gas, underground electric, stuff like that. Once all of that is complete, then that whole area is then to be stabilized as well. And so the goal here and what we're trying to accomplish is that as we stabilize all of these sections over time, by the time house construction starts, then as they go through and as they say, okay, lot four, we're going to build a hot house on lot four. Well, then any tree clearing or anything that has to happen on lot four gets done. And then if they move on to lot nine, for example, then the little bit of clearing that needs to get done or just recreating purposes in that area gets done. Most of lot nine would have already then been done because it's kind of envelope in in one and three in two, but basically overall, each house gets built and that's when that area gets disturbed. So we're trying to basically minimize any possibility of having unstabilized soil anywhere on site.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you. And timing, like this whole project, is it like a year, eighteen months?
Um, I know the applicant is very eager to get started, excuse me. But given that these basins have to be dug and then stabilized in a timely manner, that window is very fastly closing. So whether it's something that can get started this year or something that has to wait until the spring will basically kind of depend on when the applicant applicant actually has the approval to start because if he can't get the basins dug and then seeded where seed is actually going to take, then we don't want them dug or kind of started and left in a position where we could face large amounts of erosion over time. So the schedule of the project is kind of going to be based around that as you can't start building. We can't start. We're not going to start building the road and can't start building the road per our schedule and what we've put on the plans and the conditions of approval that are now on the plans. That can't happen until those basins and everything else is is done, completed, inspected, every and, you know, we've gone through it with the town and everybody thinks that that it would then be an appropriate time to start that next phase. So.
Yeah, that's fair. I I understand where you're coming from. I mean, it's obviously a very special piece of land. We need to take safeguards to protect it, protect the neighbors. You know, you mentioned erosion. Once, you know, you you can't bring it back, right? So you you want to do it carefully, which it sounds like you're working very closely with town staff. So thank you. And then, you know, a lot of the commissioners are new. I was wondering if you can maybe tell us if you have done any past projects in town or around town? Can you tell us about your company?
Uh, Harry Colson?
Developers.
Oh, the developer.
Yeah.
So the developer is CalcCo Construction. They've done quite a few projects in town. And we're actually going to be talking after this about an informal discussion about another project that they're looking at starting. But currently, right now, the Talcat Notch is a project that we're going to be bringing before you guys shortly. That's a sub another subdivision.
Sorry to interrupt you. Is anyone available from CalcCo by any chance this year?
I don't know if John is on.
John and there's John and Brianna. So yeah, go ahead and Brianna, you can unmute the microphone or John, one of you.
Yes.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There he is. Okay.
Here I am. Yeah, I'm listening. I'm on my phone. I'm on my iPhone. So don't I didn't my computer wasn't working. Anyway, yes. Johnson East CalcCo Construction. So we've developed residential subdivisions throughout Bristol, Farmington, Plainville, Suddington, Connecticut. And in Farmington, we're doing Tanbark Chase right now, finishing it up. We got three lots left, which was a total of, I think, twenty-four lots there. Wisteria Lane we did. Pavarella Estates we did in Farmington. So and I think we did another one on Wakefield Road, a smaller subdivision of four lots, or Poplar Estates. So, yeah, we did like five subdivisions in Farmington and we did Maximum Beverage. Our office buildings in Farmington, three twenty-one Main Street across from CVS.
Okay.
So we're a Farmington-based company. And I can give you, I mean, we did a lot of stuff in Suddington, Connecticut and Plainville, but
That works. Thank you. And as far as history is concerned, people enjoy living in your communities?
Well, yeah, I mean, drive by them. They're beautiful communities. I mean, we're we're dining from twelve lots to twenty lots to a hundred lots. So in Suddington, we're doing a ninety-six unit development, which is fifty-five and up. It's called Applegate. We've done large developments in Suddington, you know, sixty, seventy lot subdivisions over the last twenty-five years. So we built a lot of homes. And we do a lot of commercial too. We're big retail developers. So, you know, we've done a lot of stuff on Queen Street, you know, Chick-fil-A, all these BJ's Wholesale Club, that all those properties we built. So we we mix it up. We have industrial, retail and residential development.
That's wonderful. I did not know that. Thank you. And you you mentioned Tanbark. So so I'm I'm glad I I heard that you're not finished because it is something I drive by every single day on Plainville Avenue. And it, you know, as you enter that subdivision and at the end of the cul-de-sac, I think it backs into Plainville Avenue. It does not look great. So I'm happy to hear you're still working on it.
Yeah, we got two lots left in the cul-de-sac. We're in town for permit on one. And we're wrapping up a contract on the last lot. So we should have the three remaining lots hopefully completed by the spring of twenty-three and then we'll pave the road. We're not going to pave it until we're done with all the construction.
And the entrance?
In order to resurface.
And I apologize for interrupting you, but the entrance to Tanbark will will look better than it does today?
The entrance got an island going in it. We didn't put it in because the trucks coming in and out would run over and break it all up. So.
Okay, yeah, it's I'm glad you said you're not finished though, because you're going to be doing another project possibly, right? If approved and we want our neighborhoods to look awesome too and our our neighbors to be or residents to be happy. All right. So I think we covered everything about the project. I would love to. I'll talk about the correspondence, Shannon.
Okay.
Because I don't know if the person that wrote to us is online, but I think it should be something that we cover.
I I believe I believe they are, but yes, we will put the the correspondence up. So we'll go into some public comments. So the written public comment, we've received one letter from the owners at nineteen Whispering Rod Road. It came in last week. It was distributed to the applicant and to the commission members. It's being displayed on the screen here to have it entered into the record. It is from Ms. Catherine Leary, again, neighbor to the north at nineteen Whispering Rod, discussing her concerns with the the project and includes an attachment of correspondence she provided back in twenty fifteen to Inland Wetlands and Planning Chairman at that time when the project was first brought forth. And so that is being captured on the screen as well. And more recently is a letter that she has sent in and is an attachment to this letter to TPZ, but a letter that she had sent in September of twenty twenty-one a year ago to the Inland Wetlands Commission regarding the inland wetlands application for this current development. And as you know, I included the inland wetlands decision letter that was dated January twenty-two, twenty twenty-two to all of you. It's part of the documents for review for this application. And Ms. Leary also included accident data that I believe she obtained from the Farmington Police Department. So that concludes the written correspondence that had been received on this application.
Okay.
And then
So I guess there I believe there are people that have called in if you'd like to proceed to that. Yeah. Will the can the applicant comment after those or? How do you? Okay, that's my idea. Let's let's get everybody online. So we're not here too too late. And we're giving this project the attention it deserves. And yeah, let's let's roll with it.
Okay, so we are going to start the public comment portion for the CalcCo Construction application for the eleven-lot cluster subdivision at one sixty-eight Coppermine Road. We'll ask anyone from the public if you have called in to participate to please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. To do so, if you've called on on your computer, then there's an icon at the bottom. If you've dialed in, I believe it's star seven or star nine to raise your hand and comment. We will take you in order that you're appearing on my Zoom screen. And we will ask you to provide your name and your property address. Your comments will be directed to the commission and then they will elaborate after afterwards. So the first one with hand raised that I have on my list is a Jose Reyes. If you can go ahead and unmute your microphone and again, name and address and then address the commission, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jose Ruiz. I'm at twenty Whispering Rod Road. I'm one of the adjoining neighbors to the property in question. Thank you for the opportunity to express my point. I am concerned by this proposal. Although there has been some changes since it was first brought up in twenty fourteen, the point remains, we're trying to inject, you know, shoehorn eleven houses in a fairly small area. I'm worried about the effects that that development is going to have in our area. As you might have heard in the past from many of the neighbors, we currently have issues with properties, you know, every time that there's a little bit of rain, we get a lot of flooding. And now we're talking about injecting eleven houses. I can only speak for myself because I am not asking the developer to fix my problems. Let me make that clear because in the past there has been comments alluding that we are perhaps trying to get the developer to fix our problems, existing problems. That is not the case. I just want to make sure that the current issues that we have in this neighborhood are not exacerbated. I am concerned by some of the things that I keep hearing over the years, every time we have the hearings. So the applicant indicated at the beginning that there's barely going to be any tree, you know, clearing. Yet in this, you know, moments later, we're looking at the plans an area northeast of the area of the development. By the own admission, about half or a little bit more than half of the trees are going to be removed. And the concern that I have is not in terms of privacy. The concern that I have is the ability of those trees to, you know, pull in the water. I know that there's been changes in the design to try to put the detention, you know, basins and other infrastructure, but you can never in the long run substitute the work that nature is going to be doing. I am concerned of the fact that the proposal is with the maintenance of the detention, you know, ponds is that we'll provide, you know, the the applicant is going to provide a maintenance schedule. And then now that maintenance is going to be shifted to the town. And I have concerns both as the neighbor and also as a taxpayer. So basically now we're introducing additional, you know, expenses to this town and to its taxpayers for the duration, you know, the lifetime of this development. So the developer gains, you know, rips all the benefits at the beginning and the costs associated, the ongoing cost to maintain those ponds now is shifted to somebody else. To me, both as the neighbor and a taxpayer, that is of concern because what happens in the future if the town is facing, you know, financial, you know, constraints like we've seen recently? That those are added costs that are being imposed, you know, to this town. And if things are not being able to maintain because the fundings are restricted, the neighbors are going to be the ones that are going to be taking up the cost of, you know, the of those ponds not doing the job that they're supposed to be doing because of all these trees being removed. So I would like to express my opposition to this development. I think that it will be severely detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Diane Clarkin. Diane, if you'd like to unmute your microphone, you should be able to do so at this time.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My family and I have lived on Red Coat Lane for thirty-nine years and our property borders the proposed development on the side of the wetlands. For twenty years, we did not have a water problem in our basement. But gradually, over time, we have water in our basement now every year. It has gotten worse. We feel this is due to many factors, but one being the increased development on Coppermine Road since we moved here thirty-nine years ago. We're most concerned that this large development of eleven homes will take away most of the permeable land behind us, which presently which presently absorbs most of the rain and snow runoff. We feel that the Wetlands Commission failed to address the effect on the neighboring property's water problems as they felt their mission was only to address the effect on the wetlands. We hope the Planning and Zoning Commission can address the potential worsening of the water problems that already exist if this development proceeds. We would also like you to, your committee, to clarify who is going to maintain these water basins as Mr. Panico said, it seems like it's going to be the town now. Well, like Mr. Ruiz said, what happens if the town doesn't maintain these basins as has happened in the past and other developments? We appreciate you taking the time to look at this development a little bit more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you give me your home number, please?
What's that?
What is the home number, please? You live at?
Forty-eight Red Coat Lane.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is E. Leary.
This is Catherine Leary, Mrs. Ed Leary.
Okay.
And I have written several letters to both Inland Wetlands and Planning and Zoning. I want to, I agree with Mr. Ruiz, who is my neighbor across the street about the vegetation, the natural vegetation, which sucks a lot of the water out of the out of the ground. I've seen Mr. Sinise's developments and the one in ten on Tanbark, the one on Mysteria Lane are the closest ones to me. And I see how I see the devastation or decimation, let me say that, of coming in and removing all of the trees so that people can have their beautiful yards, their walkout basements. And what is going to prevent the homeowners from cutting down the remainder of the trees in their yards? There is nothing that can be done about that. Also, I would like to ask how many of the commissioners on the present commission have actually walked this property and have seen the wetlands and have observed firsthand what exactly is going on here and can place it in their minds? The other thing that I worry about is, and in my letter and in the copy of the police report, you see that the entrance to this development is on the sharpest part of the curve on Coppermine Road. And yes, the speed limit is twenty miles an hour, but obviously with the number of motor vehicle apps accidents that have happened. And this list is only in the last five years or so, the number of motor vehicle accidents that have happened on this road is quite substantial, and I think it bears consideration. And I think the first two houses at the entrance of this road should be completely eliminated and the line of sight increased as much as possible. Also, we don't know what these houses are going to look like. You say that no sump pumps are going to be in the basements. Well, that means to me that the houses are going to have to be perched very high up, like it'll be like a three or four story house. To me, that 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 sounds kind of ugly, but I guess that's what you have to do in order not to have a sump pump in your basement like all the rest of us in this neighborhood who have had to install sump pumps and generators to run the sump pumps. That's all I have to say. I'm very, very much against this entire development. And I hope the commissioners will take it upon themselves to walk this property and see it for themselves and see what it what our neighborhood looks like now. And we want it to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Eric. If you go ahead and unmute your microphone, Eric, again, name and street address and address the commission, please.
Hello, thank you for taking my time. My name is Eric O'Keefe and I live at forty-four Red Coat Lane. And can everybody hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I do want to express how much I appreciate you guys taking this up and having a public discourse about it. I vehemently opposed this development as it went through the wetlands phase and have made numerous statements, both written and verbally in opposition to it. Where my property is, I back up right at the choke point of where the wetlands breaks into essentially a stream that then moves underground. I, in the Wetlands Commission, which I'm not going to relitigate, have mentioned that we're the ones sitting really at the firing gun property here for any mistakes at all. As my neighbors have mentioned, a lot of assumptions have been made during the proposal process. We've never been given one hundred percent assurances. I disagree with the wetlands approval of it, but from their scope and standpoint, I think that they're not looking at all of the bigger pictures where I'm hoping that the rest of the zoning committee comes into. We frequently sit in my backyard and watch all of the various wildlife move through this corridor back here. Not only are there black bears, coyotes, bobcats, there's porcupines, snapping turtles, foxes, literally every wildlife that we can enjoy in Connecticut is back here in this area. And they're active day and night, and it's a really pleasurable thing to see. And to bring in and put such a large development in this area, I think would detract from what makes Farmington Farmington and what makes this specific subdivision so special in our neighborhood. I also think that in putting in this development without any guarantees for the surrounding neighbors, that there will be no harm to the existing homes in the neighborhood that an error was made in it even getting out of the Wetlands Commission. But moving on from just the Wetlands Commission part and what their scope was, I would also like to bring up and reemphasize some things that the rest of the neighbors have already mentioned. Outside of the wetlands, we are looking at putting in a lot of homes in a very small area in a region of Unionville that is already arguably overpopulated. The school system that will be servicing this at West District School already has classroom size issues. And we're going to add eleven more homes on top of all of the other development that's been going around. At what point do we say enough is enough on packing these in? A couple more homes, a couple more homes, and then a couple more homes. Where do we draw a line? And that's what I'm asking you guys to do is to draw the line here and say, listen to the community, listen to the people that have vested interests and stakes in the neighborhood. And we're all screaming at the top of our lungs. We're full. Our properties are in danger. One small mistake or miscalculation on a spreadsheet now in order to get something passed through has real dollar and cents repercussions to the existing members of the community. Also, I want to reiterate some of the things that our neighbors have said. I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about wildlife. I'm concerned about schools. I'm concerned about us having to foot the bill down the road for something that may come up that's unforeseen but will be very real in a cost to us, both the maintenance and upkeep of the surrounding areas, the maintenance upkeep of the proposed development, and also the maintenance upkeep for our roads, our school systems, and everything else around. So thank you very much for your time and consideration. And again, I want to reiterate that I am opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. There's more people.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, there's more. Okay, next up is someone I've got just a phone number ending in eight two nine oh. So the individual that's called in on eight two nine oh, you can unmute your phone again, phone number. Sorry, name and address, please, for the commission.
Brian Grenier, twenty-four Whispering Rod Road, Unionville.
Okay.
A lot is on the north side of Buck's Lot Seven and Development there. I just had a question for the engineer. How much fill is going into like those last two lots there that are above the north side? Like you guys are raising the grade, right?
Brian, if you know offhand and want to go ahead and answer that, I can also put a grading plan up real quick.
Yeah, so. Go ahead.
Hang on, let's get an answer for you.
So if you look at the grading plan there, the end of the cul-de-sac is up about eight and a half feet or so or about eight feet. And at the back of the house, it is at grade. So that's an example. That house is a walkout.
Okay, so.
So.
So there's fill here, but it it grades out. So by the time you reach, so at the at the cul-de-sac, there's eight feet of fill. By the time you reach the rear of the house, there's zero feet of fill. There's zero feet of fill from the rear of the house to the property line. Mr. Panico, is that correct?
Correct. There's almost no grading behind the house to the to the property line. It's very, very minimal. In fact, we're we're saving the tree line pretty much at the rear setback there. Everything is undisturbed.
My concerns are all the same as my other neighbors, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so opposed.
Yes. Okay, Steve Lawler, if you can, please unmute your microphone and address the commission.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. My name is Steve Lawler at one fifty-four Coppermine Road. And I'm speaking tonight with the rest of my neighbors in opposition of this proposed development at one sixty-eight Coppermine Road. This is something that myself and my neighbors have been fighting for, fighting against since two thousand and fifteen and hope you'll take our concerns into consideration and vote to deny this application in its current form. So Coppermine Road sees is a route that sees a large amount of traffic, people using it to cut through between Bristol and the center of town. Most of these vehicles don't really observe the speed limit, particularly going around the bend where one sixty-eight is located. I live on the street and I've routinely heard people rev their engines in the middle of the night fly around it racing their cars. And like Ms. Leary and some of the others mentioned, lots of concerns around adding a side street in the middle of the bend, increasing accidents and other traffic safety issues. You know, people right now are accustomed to there not being anything there. I think it'll be equally difficult for anybody pulling out of that side street to see oncoming traffic clearly. I don't think this development will fit in with the aesthetics of our current neighborhood either. I feel that there are too many houses being proposed for the amount of available buildable space. I moved into my house almost twelve years ago because the area wasn't really overdeveloped. We have plenty of space and privacy between neighboring properties now as things currently stand. And I don't feel that jamming this development in alliance with how the houses currently here are spaced. Most of the houses on the on the section of road are older homes with varied appearance, you know, like Eric had said, kind of went a certain term to the area. It doesn't really look like every other kind of new construction development that's going in. So during a public hearing that took place, I think it was towards the beginning of the year, maybe around March or so, based on some concerns that a lot of the neighbors here that have mentioned concerns about this project. There was another application that the commission denied for an application for a garage expansion. And they agreed with all the neighbors' concerns that it would be too large and it wouldn't fit the aesthetics of the neighborhood. There were similar concerns that were raised in the Inland Wetlands Commission by one of the commissioners who felt that there were also too many houses being proposed, and he hoped that it would be discussed and reduced by this commission here. He was also the only one that voted to deny the application in that form as well. So I urge the commission to consider the negative impact this development will have to the people who have long resided in the community adjacent to this property. Many of us are lifelong residents with a vested interest in the success and future of our neighborhoods in town. So I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for calling in.
Okay, next is Bill Bartucca. If you can go ahead. Yep.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, Bill Bartucca, fifty Red Coat Lane. Good evening. I would like to second my neighbor's well-articulated and thoughtful commentaries. I don't think it, you know, there's any need for me to accentuate what's already been said, but certainly want to make my feelings known. And my neighbors have done an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in.
Okay. Okay, nope, there is one more here. There's a Steve with hand raised, no last name. If you can unmute your microphone and address the commission, please. Steve, can you address the commission? Steve, we have no audio for you. Do you want to address the commission? Is anyone else called in that would like to address the commission? Okay. Madam Chair, we do have another. There's a hand raised over on the panel. So.
Okay.
Mr. Vivar, you should be able to unmute your microphone and address the commission if you wish.
Hi, Shannon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Keith Vivar, twenty-two Coppermine Road. And I appreciate everybody on the commission's time, and I will try not to make this a later night than it needs to be. I just wanted to stress how important it is to make sure that there is a solution for the water when this development, if it if it gets through. And speaking with residents from Red Coat Lane and the West District Road area last year, every house that I knocked on while campaigning for town council, every single house that I spoke to spoke about their concerns about this development and what happens to their basements or their properties with each additional house that comes in in that area. But essentially, every new development, every new home that gets built, there's more water and more water and more stress put upon that neighborhood. So I understand that you know, the property owners' rights and their ability to develop on that property, if it gets through this commission. I just really want to make sure that we're super conscientious about where the water goes and what the potential impact is for those areas. So I I hope if something gets through that that we put a lot of emphasis on that for these neighbors. And that's it. And I just want to thank the commission again for their time. You guys are all volunteers and I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Keith. Okay, I think Keith was the last one.
Well, I see. If anyone else has called in that wishes to address the commission with respect to this application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. One more time, if anyone else called in while wishing to use, wishing to address the commission regarding this application for one sixty-eight Coppermine Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, at this time, there's no other comments or hands raised.
All right, so let's turn it over to the applicant for some responses.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. So for the record, I just wanted to make a couple of things clear. So we have been working with town staff on this. I know everybody's aware that this has been a lengthy process for about, I think it was been about two years or so. And Shannon, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I know we did preliminary before we ever submitted anything in twenty twenty at some point, again, in twenty twenty, early twenty twenty-one, and then finally submitted a complete package about halfway through twenty twenty-one. So we've been working with town staff very, very, very closely. Town staff has always been very concerned about the water issues out here. The previous application for this project. Um, the previous application for this project raised a lot of water issues, um, which for that year before we actually submitted this project to wetlands, that's what we focused on. We focused on fi- figuring out any potential flaw, uh, in that original design, finding a way to make it better and finding a way to make, uh, any of the concerns, uh, no longer concerns. Um, so, you know, I'll, I'm going to try to touch base on all these, uh, comments uh, as quickly and efficiently as possible. Um, so there issue, a couple of issues came up about the tree clearing. Uh, I apologize if I misspoke. The intent was that to note that we are clearing as little trees to the west as possible. Um, that's the, the biggest area of concern, uh, at least it was the biggest area of concern from everybody, from a wildlife corridor perspective, a wetlands perspective, uh, environmental protection perspective. Uh, so that was really the focus. Um, once again, uh, you know, we call out and show, uh, Shannon showed that kind of GIS overlay image of the site. Uh, you know, a lot of what, you know, I think we're, we're seeing as tree line isn't necessarily tree line. Yes, we do have a portion that's being cleared in that northeast corner. Um, but that's the only real kind of significant area of, of tree that we're clearing. Now, from a stormwater runoff perspective, um, to familiarize everybody kind of very briefly, I don't want to get too much into the engineering of everything, but the way we look at these sites is from an existing conditions perspective, uh, to a post-development perspective. Um, different surface materials have different runoff coefficients. Um, brass has a different runoff coefficient than, than forested area. Uh, pavement has a much faster, um, and a much, uh, different, um, runoff coefficient. So all of these changes, when we change the amount of trees on a site, when we take out large amounts of vegetation and replace them with pavement or roof or things of that nature, um, we do take all of that into account. Um, and that goes into those Xiro calculations. Uh, and once again, um, we took this, uh, town staff was very concerned with the amount of water, uh, which isn't something that's calculated that we look at from a Xiro perspective. The, the requirement, um, the town requirement is to meet zero increase and runoff. We went a step beyond that and said, okay, well, we know that we're meeting Xiro. The ponds, um, were about half the size of what the ponds are now. Um, and we were able to meet Xiro, zero increase and runoff. So with the development as it stood, the ponds were half the size. We knew that there was the s- the same amount of water or less leaving the site with our design than before. There were still, the town was still concerned about the amount of volume. We went ahead and said, okay, well, what can we do to make sure that we are not increasing the amount of volume of water that's coming off the site? Cause the neighbors voiced that, uh, concern, uh, during the wetlands process. So we went ahead and we enlarged these basin, basins to a point where now, given all of our calculation, uh, as I had mentioned earlier, we know that we're reducing the amount of volume of water that's leaving the site as well. Um, so I understand that there is still concern, um, but then I don't think that it's a matter of, you know, staff or the wetlands commission. I'm sorry?
I'll check that somebody's mics on. If you're not speaking, please mute your microphone.
Um, so just to kind of sum that up, I, I, I know that, I understand that there's a concern thinking that, uh, both, uh, our office as engineers, the town staff, wetlands, uh, didn't seem, didn't think that this was a concern or didn't take this concern seriously. Uh, we took this concern very seriously and once again, we went above and beyond even what the, the requirement of the town of Farmington is to ensure that there weren't going to be water issues uh, in the future for the neighbors, uh, downstream of this property. And that process went on for about a year of changes. Uh, as far as the sump pumps, uh, go and, you know, raising the houses so that, you know, we know these ones don't need sump pumps. The town staff was very adamant about the fact that they did not want any of these houses to have sump pumps. They didn't, not only did there, were there no sump pumps, they didn't want any of the basements in groundwater. They didn't want any of the basements within the seasonal high water table. Um, they didn't want any potential future water concerns to ever come up with any of these houses in this development. And so that's why the recommendation was made to make sure there were no sump pumps. And yes, the only way to do that is then to raise basements and raise things so that, um, you don't have to ever worry about that. Uh, and so yes, that's why we raised the road. Uh, everything is a, a walkout on that one side. And then we had to raise basement elevations and make some changes, uh, accordingly. But that's why we did that. Um, the, uh, concern about the, uh, cars in the traffic and the curve, um, it may seem counterintuitive. I, I guess because yes, it's a, you know, it's a curve and you want to make kind of, I guess, think that that would be a bad place for a, um, intersection, but it's actually the best place, uh, for an intersection. Uh, by putting the road directly on that edge of that curve, it means that the people pulling out of that road can literally see traffic almost the entire way. We're o- o- well over six hundred feet of path of travel to be able to see oncoming traffic. So even if somebody is, is speeding down Copper Mine Road above the posted speed limit like they shouldn't be doing, but we all know happens. You know, Shannon just pulled this map up. You can see that's pretty much a straightaway from the entrance of our, uh, road all the way down to number one fifteen there. So, um, and almost to the intersection there. So there is a large amount, the requirement is, uh, four hundred feet, um, for the posted speed limit. That's what the, um, regulations require. Uh, as a four hundred foot site distance, we're well over six hundred feet in both directions. Um, so while it may seem, like I said, counterintuitive to have the intersection at that curve, it provides the absolute best site distance for anybody pulling out of, uh, this new development to make sure that they have enough time uh, and that there isn't oncoming traffic, uh, coming in a, either direction. Um. Moving on, uh, the concerns about house heights, uh, and stuff like that, the, these houses still uh, need to meet all of the required zoning, all of the zoning requirements, uh, so there won't be four-story houses. Um, it still has to meet the underlying zone of R thirty. So from a house height perspective, setback requirement perspective, it, we're, we're meeting all of the, the zoning requirements with all of these houses and that will go through the plot plan phase, obviously with the town staff, uh, for review. Uh, once this, i- if this is so approved, as they go to build the individual houses, they'll, that will all get looked at once again by town staff. Um, the, let's see what the next, um, as far as the lot sizes, Shannon, if you don't mind pulling up the GIS, uh, you know, I know it sounds like, um, maybe like, you know, we're, we're really like, you know, reducing the lot areas on these. But if you kind of look at the surrounding area there, Red Coat Lane, Whispering Rod Road, um, if you click on some of those, uh, lots from a GIS pers- or from a spatial perspective, a lot of those lots are under half an acre, so they're not quite the thirty thousand, uh, square foot requirement, um, as it stands today. Um, and we do have quite a, quite a few of these lots. Yes, some of them are minimums, uh, are closer to that minimum. Uh, like I said, we tried to keep a lot of those lots as tight to the minimums as possible to maximize the amount of open space we were then able to provide. Um, but we do have, lot seven has thirty-three thousand square feet of land area. Uh, and most of our lots are closer to twenty thousand square feet. So, um, certainly understand the concern about kind of jamming everything together, but that is also generally kind of the point and purpose of the, of the cluster subdivision is to reduce those lot areas and to, to kind of squeeze things down a little bit so that we can maximize the amount of open space and maximize that green space and retain as much of that as possible as well. Um, I think that, uh, from a questions perspective, that touched on, I know a lot, a lot of people had a lot of questions. I think a lot of them generally tend to, tended to kind of veer into the same general issues. But to, to clarify, I, you know, I, I do want it to be made very clear that we did spend a lot of time on trying to do everything we possibly could and look at every scenario here to ensure that there would not be any doubt, any issues for neighbors downstream because of this project. Um, and I know that in the past, through the wetlands testimony and, and on the record there, a lot of people, even tonight, people have said, you know, there's, there's a lot of water issues out there, but we do not want to be a contributing factor. We're not, you know, I'm not going to sit here and promise that this subdivision is going to somehow correct all of those problems. But, um, as somebody stated, that's obviously not what they're looking for. But we went through all of these different exercises and all of these iterations of this project to ensure that this would not be a cause of future problems. Uh, and by trying to reduce that volume of runoff, you know, maybe hopefully potentially, us reducing that amount of runoff may help some of that, that problem downstream. At least what we know is by making the basins the size that we've made them and by collecting as much of the site of the water from the eastern portion of our site and our development as we can and storing it within those basins, at least a small portion of that water that would have run into the wetlands and into the little stream that tends to flow, uh, at points down there, at least we're reducing some of that burden.
Hey, thank you. So, um, there were a lot of, you know, comments, um, from our neighbors. I think we should, um, go back to the commissioners to see if they have additional questions. Shannon, before we do that, can you show us? I know, you know, we have a separate inland wetland commission. Can you show us what the wetlands are, like how they travel here? Just for perspective.
Certainly. So the, uh, graphic that's on the screen has the wetlands, so the wetland delineation. So Copper Mine Road is, is to the south and I'll flip back to the GIS too, but I'll use this, uh, initially. So Copper Mine Road is to the south. The wetland delineation is this dark line. That's the limit of wetlands that's been delineated on the property, uh, delineated by a professional soil scientist. And there's a small wetland up in the northeast corner. There is also a water course associated with this wetland. And when you, when we flip back to the GIS, you'll see it, and the water course is this dash line on the far, uh, edge. And it's somewhat meandering. It does not have a, a very large pitch to it. Um, but you can see, right, so here's the, you start to see the water course when you see it in the, um, in the tree line. So here's the water course and then the wetlands, you'll recall, closely follows, parallels the water course. There's a finger of the wetland that juts out in this area.
Yep.
And then as you come down, uh, near the roadway, you can even see here in the aerial that it, you know, the water course is fairly defined in this area. And then you can still see the defined water course, but it clearly gets a little more marshy. And that's where that wetland flared out opposite Twin Ponds Road and there's culverts under the road. So all this that I'm showing you is our online GIS system that's available on the town website. Um, so anyone, um, can, can see this. So there's a set of culverts that come under Twin Ponds and then a larger culvert, um, from Twin Pond north into this development. And then, uh, it continues north and then, uh, crosses Plainville Avenue to Unionville Brook and then into the Farmington River.
So I know there's a lot of, uh, work still to be done. There was let, I don't want to say last minute, but there was correspondence received, you know, Friday, maybe even today. Um, do you know from an engineering standpoint of increasing the basins by thirty percent, right? That's what effect is happening. Is, is that enough or do we have done, know yet?
Uh, we know, Mr. Bruce here, our, um, senior assistant planner, uh, does our engineering reviews, has, uh, looked at all of the engineering documentation. And that increase in the basins took place during the, uh, wetland permitting phase. And it was done because we were concerned that footing drains would be discharging into these basins, not just the roofs and roadway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and particularly with a, the sump pumps. Um, so we required that those be increased to provide additional storage uh, to ensure that the hundred-year storm volume would be available at that time. Should they, should we have a hundred-year storm? Um, since then, the applicant has done additional work to raise the road, move the foundations out of what we term the seasonal high groundwater and eliminate the need for the sump pumps.
Mm-hmm.
But the basins, i- they did that additional work, but did not then subsequently decrease the basins. The basins remained at the increased size. Okay. Mr. Seer is on the phone if we want to hear from him directly on any of this.
You know, so we learned a lot of, we have received a lot of information. We heard comments. We learned more, right, from the applicant today. Um, I'm just, uh, speaking out loud and kind of thinking about what kind of, like direct, which direction we're going to take this. Uh, so I definitely think, uh, you know, each commissioner should have a chance to ask, uh, you know, final questions. And I guess the message to the commissioners is, uh, we don't have to close this meeting today.
Correct.
Or we can close it and vote later, but it, it is an important piece of parcel for our town. Um, and there, you know, I, I'm obviously not an engineer, y- you know, my background, but I think that, uh, the staff should have a chance to review the comments and maybe help us out.
Well, and the commission needs to understand that the staff's here to answer your questions too, whether it's, uh, uh, so both myself and Mr. Seer are on the phone. So if there's a question about some of the documentation that's been presented, we're happy to answer your questions to the best of our ability. And if we can't, then we'll collectively with the applicant find the answer. So.
Timing wise, if we were to keep this open, so this is the first time, right, this is in front of us.
Yep, so it's thirty-five days to, to hold the hearing. The hearing can stay open for thirty-five days. So to, to keep it open for one more meeting is not.
Okay.
Detrimental. It could go to October, um, without needing an extension.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay. So commissioners, let's go back, uh, for additional questions to either the applicant or Shannon and Bruce. And, uh, how are you feeling about, um, making a decision today or waiting till the next meeting where we have more information? So Patrick, you're on the spot first. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so this is a regulation question. So this piece of property is cluster. What, so how does that work exactly? Um, how many houses are, would be available on this piece? Uh, if it was a standard subdivision, I mean, am I wording that correctly?
You sure are, and that's a great question. And I believe the standard plan is at the end of the set. So, is part of a cluster subdivision, one of the requirements is, uh, the applicant is obligated, sorry folks, as I'm zooming in and out, um, the applicant is obligated to show what a standard, how a standard subdivision would lay out and the number of lots they would reasonably be able to achieve without unreasonably impacting wetlands and, and the water course. So you can see some of the wetlands end up on some of these parcels, but it doesn't necessarily impact. So I believe if we zoom in and walk around, so they're, they're not allowed to gain additional parcels. So if they were to do a standard subdivision, you have one, two, three, four. Uh, I'm missing my numbers. Is that five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten and eleven. And so it'd be an eleven lot subdivision using the standard. Again, this is the R thirty, so I'm going to flip back. Bear with me. So I gotta change some layering here. Hang on folks, as I'm moving things around on my screen. So this is the R thirty zone. The neighborhood to the north with Whispering Rod and Red Coat is an R thirty open space zone, which is very similar to an R thirty cluster. The intent is still the same to have parcels of open space. You'll see there's large, this track of open space, this tract of open space and this behind Red Coat, were all achieved through this R thirty open space at the time that this came through, I want to say in the six- I want to say in the sixties or early seventies. Um. And again, these are, so rather than thirty thousand square foot lots, this is, these are twenty thousand square foot lots. This proposed here um, is a cluster subdivision allows you to go even smaller down to fifteen thousand square foot. Uh, but as Mr. Panico noted for the record, that many of the lots are above that minimum threshold. So it doesn't, it, this is not a mechanism to increase the number of allowable lots for the subdivision. It's a mechanism to um, maintain the number of allowable lots while preserving. The wetlands and water course or other natural resources. There's a, a list within the regulation of other. Natural resources. In this case, it's wetlands and water courses. Uh, sometimes it's ridgeline. There's other, other things that we look at that would. Um, be considered for a cluster subdivision.
Okay. And can you flip back to the first concept plan that the original one with, yeah? Now that detention basin, how accurate? So obviously all the lots are fitting there. Um, how much work was done? How far was this plan developed? Like, like is that even a realistic detention basin?
Uh, I honestly don't know that. Um, so it may be they would have had to come into some of. These lots. It is showing deeper than the detention basins that are currently proposed. So the detention basins currently proposed are only um, I want to say three to four feet. All of this uh, has been two foot contours. So two, four, six, eight. Is at least eight to, to, yeah, probably eight feet deep. So it's, it's twice the depth. So I, I don't know the answer to that with respect to the size that, that configuration. The, the standard isn't to require them to do a fully engineered, fully developed. It's. Conceptually, how many lots can you achieve? And then that's the maximum number. Um, with a loose understanding that uh, you might need to make modifications as you go through it in order to accommodate drainage. Things of that nature.
Okay. So, so it is possible that this plan would be presented in that basin right there would. Have to grow to a size that it would potentially reduce the amount of lots?
It's conceivable that it, it, yes, if that basin had to be changed in such a way. It could be, i- if this was advanced, that lot eleven perhaps would not have been allowed and it would have maxed out at ten lots. It's conceivable.
Okay.
That's not the standard that um, and, and benchmark that these applications have been. Have had to meet.
Okay. Just, yeah, I'm just trying to understand it. Now flipping back to the aerial photo of like Red Coat um, and all those neighborhoods. Um, so those are open space and you, obviously, and again, you explained where it is, how? So these houses in terms of groundwater and all that, are the basements in groundwater and are they relying on s- sump pumps?
I, I believe that's what many of the neighbors have testified. Yes, I haven't been in any of the homes, but I believe that's what they have, have testified. As part of their public comment.
And, and in terms of like, so when I, when I, I don't see, and again, obviously it's, it's just an aerial. Um, are there any detention basins in any of these neighborhoods?
I.
And I'm just peppering these questions.
I know, no, that's okay. Uh, this, that's okay. So Whispering Rod and Red Coat are. Again, because of the age of this development, it's. I think these homes were built in. Yeah, nineteen sixty-nine. So these are six, late sixties, early seventies development. So. The design standards of that time versus the, e- e- even the environmental regulations. The environmental regulations, design standards, all of that has evolved en- enormously in fifty years. Um, so these, I'm not aware of a formal detention basin here. So if I put, again, I'll put the storm drain back on. So the storm drainage, the, the roadway storm drainage is coming right down through Whispering Rod. And there's a culvert. So there's town of Farmington access easements to access this cross culvert. And then it comes through and we've got an easement on the property line here. And then we're back into town of Farmington land. So the wetlands back in the day, the wetlands were the, the detention basins. And it was just get the water to the wetland and it'll do whatever it needs to. I believe at the end of Bella Lane, um, way off, there is a small basin here. Um, I'm gonna pick a, a random property again. Um, I'm just trying to find the year and that's nineteen eighty-four. So we're at least into environmental regulations. Um, but the storm drainage regulations were still evolving. Our storm drain manual. Um, that we use, I'm trying, I think it's the nineteen nineties for DOT storm drain manual.
Yeah.
Um, and the idea of having to design for a hundred year storm is, is something really that didn't. I believe come into discussion on a regular basis until the, the mid to late nineties, early two thousands. So there is a basin here. I do not know what design storm it's for.
Okay. And then this question is, um, so I think, I believe I, I wrote this down quick, but I believe it was Diane. She had mi- she had mentioned and, and Diane, maybe you would, you can speak to this. Um, you had mentioned you lived there for thirty-nine years. Um, and that it's only as of the last twenty years that you started to, to really notice issues with water. Um, and some of that is due to new construction in the area. Within the last twenty years, is that pretty accurate on what you were saying?
Yes, it is. She's forty-eight.
And then in the last twenty years, it goes by so fast. It's, that's two thousand two. How, how many, like, do you know of which homes were built? In that time period? Cause I, I, again, I don't really know.
Well, there's been a couple of houses built on Coppermine and there's a street on Coppermine that was added after we moved, I think it's Sycamore. I'm not sure, but uh, uh, over on Coppermine and other, there's been other construction up on. Plainville Avenue and that waterfall uh, comes down our way as well. So there has been other construction in the area since we've been here.
Sycamore. So can you click on one of those, Shannon? What year was that built? And is there, that's?
It's a cross company, right? Or no?
Sycamore, yeah. And again, I'm just trying to get a feeling for the area on what. Oh, you know, Sycamore, it's right by.
Sure. Twin Ponds, no?
Yeah. Okay. So that's, okay. But that's downstream. So I think it's, yeah, right. So I will, we'll go through this, but. Um. Hang on. I grabbed the wrong, I grabbed the wrong thing. There we go.
So two thousand, yeah, okay.
Uh, well, that's, the house was built in nineteen ninety-one. The accessory structure is shed and stuff for two thousand. So the house is nineteen ninety-one.
So thirty.
No.
Thirty-one, area thirty-one years. I do math right?
Right. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but this is flowing, right? So we, we flowed downstream. So it's, it's understanding that. It's interesting. This is a separate, there's a separate, there's a watershed divide here. And so now we're starting to get. I can start putting up watershed maps.
Yeah.
The waters, there's a watershed divide here and this water comes this way. All of this water goes the other, goes the other way. Um, and comes down across and it ends up going. Over towards the rails to trails and under, uh, through all these developments through West District School and heads the other direction.
Okay. And then, so I guess, yeah, so it would have to be something built within that, the same watershed as.
Same watershed.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Uh, and again, so this, just my last comment, I guess. I'm just gonna pretty much. Explain my thinking here. So, so on one sixty-eight, you started out with a pond. The houses were in the water table, uh, or the high watermark. And you had some pumps that would. Pump that water into those ponds. So therefore those ponds were increased by thirty percent. And then from there, town staff asked you to lift those houses. So essentially those footing drains theoretically are going to remain dry, other than like a, maybe a, a bad pitch or something, you know? But not much water at all. And those ponds remained the same size, the thirty percent bigger. Correct?
Correct. So um, and it, when it wasn't even so much, and I think Shannon, it was kind of like a combination of multiple things as far as sizing was concerned. We looked at it both from uh, not only the additional flow needed, because it's very, very difficult to quantify. The volume that a footing drain is going to produce. Um, so we said, you know, let's add a safety factor to the size of that basin. So on top of, you know, wanting to add some volume to that basin for that, it was looking at the overall volume of runoff on the entire site. And reducing it. And then um, also, you know, groundwater recharge, infiltration. It, we basically looked at it and said, instead of having a six foot berm and an eight foot deep basin. You know, can we just make these basins really shallow, but really, really large? And then that way. You know, you have more of an area for potential infiltration and less surface runoff in general. Um, and that's kind of why, how we ended up with the size of the basins. Uh, on top of that, the ponds are, the basins are uh, about three feet deep. Uh, however, we have a foot of freeboard between the hundred year storm and top of our basin. So. Our basin still has some storage volume even after uh, what we're ca- we're calculating the hundred year storm saying. You know, we're storing the hundred year storm. I think that, and Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the requirement is that you have to be able to pass. The hundred year storm through your spillway, but you don't have to necessarily store it, correct?
Well, right. It's that we, we say that it's sized for the hundred year storm so that the, the. If there's a hundred year storm, that the flow leaving the basin matches the peak flow of. What had previously been uh, the flow, uh, as in the undeveloped condition. And that it is not going to overtop the basin. So yes, it's understood that it's not just. Everything's running and this is holding the hundred year storm. It is simultaneously discharging. Uh, at the same, at the same time through your little level spreader in the outlet.
Yeah. And so what I just wanted to also make clear was, we aren't like, eh, for these basins. Uh, as Shannon said, the water is still flowing out through all of those storm events. In a lot of cases, you're allowed to, to discharge that hundred year storm, some of that water through uh, the emergency spillway. And we're not doing that uh, in this case. Uh, I don't know, Shannon, if you want to go to uh, like the basin schematics or if we can just leave it at, at that. But the top of our, our basins, for example, uh, detention basin one. Is at elevation three thirty-six point five. A hundred year storm is at elevation three thirty-five point five. So that's a foot lower. So that's that foot of freeboard that we're talking about. And our spillway is at elevation three thirty-six. So we have a foot between the hundred year storm event in the top of the basin. And then half a foot between the hundred year storm event in the emergency spillway. So. Not only are we keeping all of this, as much of this water into this, in this pond as possible. Even after the hundred year storm, there is some extra additional storage within that basin. That adds another layer, uh, another layer of protection there as well.
So on and above what is required by um, regulation, right? So you're saying it's. This, this storm basin is built on a bigger or better or whatever you want to call it. Uh, on and above what is required. Is that fair?
Correct. And, and as you mentioned earlier, yes, you know, we, we raised all the houses. So realistically, there, there is no need for footing drains. Um, because they're now out of the seasonal high groundwater table. They're out of any modeling. They're out of everything. Um, but we still have all of that extra uh, volume that we're trying to, to keep accounted for as well.
So it comes down to two things. Uh, one, the calculations are correct, right? Cause this is all, all calculations and I'm, I'm assuming that's. You know, something that you're putting together and, and staff reviews and so on and so forth. And then the second thing is maintenance of this. Of this basin. Cause I, I would assume if it's left to just grow eventually. It may not work as well and so on and so forth. So that, I'm just, and again, I'm just throwing, throwing that out there. I don't know if, who could speak to that, like. So Shannon, from, from the town's perspective, it is going to be a public road. Uh, I did see the access drive. So it's very, you, you know, you can access these and that's, that's the design of that. How, how are these things maintained? Are they just put there and then left to? You know, kind of like one of those things you forget about or do, or, or is there a maintenance plan that we follow in the town of Farmington?
Uh, there is a maintenance plan. So Farmington is an MS four community. So uh, municipal storm, the separate storm sewer system. Um, and we have obligations and reporting to DEEP annually regarding our storm system. And Mr. Seer and I are lucky enough to be involved in that too. Uh, so. Um, yeah. So Mr. Uh, Panico is correct in that the roadway at, when it is complete. When the in, in tire development is completed, the roadway then is turned over to. Formally to the town of Farmington. Um, but not before there's a full engineering review to make sure that the. Systems, the, the catch basins, the detention basins, everything will be cleaned and clear and inspected. Prior to it being turned over to the town of Farmington. And then there's a formal process with town council. And the road is accepted. And at which point then the town becomes responsible for. What most people, all the snow plowing in the winter, right? So we all are trucks on there rather than the developer plowing. Um, as he's uh, progressing through, then um. We will also then take over, i- i- we take over the maintenance of the storm sewer system. And uh, I think Bruce might be able to provide a little more clarity on some of this. So uh, Mr. Seer, if you want to go ahead and. Address the, the commission.
Thank you, Shannon. I'm uh, Bruce here. I'm the senior assistant town planner. In addition to what you've been uh, mentioning with regards to the maintenance. Is a typical process that we do for other subdivisions. There are, there are many other subdivisions in town that are built. With public roads, public sewers, public storm and public, public uh, um, detention basin. So this isn't. Anything out of the norm that, that, that uh, we would be doing or, or accepting.
Okay. So, so and then in terms of maintenance, whatever, I mean, whatever's required to keep these things healthy, that's what the town does and, and. Um, again, they're ju- it's, it's all, it's not going to be forgotten, I guess, right? I mean, that's, that's the answer.
Exactly. And then, eh, eh, and then their job is to go out there on a periodic basis. Eh, as part of the MS four. Program, we're supposed to be inspecting these, looking at these. Uh, mainly the biggest things you have are. Cutting down any of the larger growth that may grow in there. And again, that takes many years for that to start. And or if there is something that like a tree falls and, and it blocks it or something and we have to go in and uh, cut it up. That's, that's pretty much, it's not a regular maintenance that's done on it and these things. These can go for quite some time. Before they need any kind of uh, periodic uh, maintenance.
Right. And that's what I would think, you know, like you said, that the large growth takes a while. Um, and probably many years, like you said, and then eventually it gets cut down to make sure that it doesn't. Um, take away from its, you know, how good it, it, it works. Uh, all right. So that's it. Thank you guys for those. One last. Um, comment um, is I, I would love and, and I'm saying this because I believe John is still on the phone here. Um. But lot one, the, just the tree line in between that existing home there, I would love to see, I would think that it would be a, you know, some type of buffer. Um, you know, could be installed there because that really is essentially the only home that is. You, I guess it's the most impacted, right? So on the, on the, on the west side, you have quite a buffer there, wetlands and so on and so forth. And even on the north. Um, but that one corner just kind of sticks out. So that's it. I was just, uh, that's my comment and, and thank you for answering all those questions.
Thank you, Patrick. So Patrick, regarding the vote, are you comfortable, if we were to vote on this? Are you comfortable voting or moving into the next meeting?
That all depends on what else I hear after this, so.
He's your, your tough, tough cookie. All right. Thank you. All right. Mike Rabulis, go for it.
Um, thank you for answering the question about the.
Um, thank you for answering the question about the detention basin. Uh, that was going to be one of my questions. Um, other one is obviously the applicant and town staff been working a lot with the concerns about adding potential um, runoff into the other neighborhoods. Um, obviously, the applicant feels satisfied with this application in that none of these houses will will have any water issues. Um, the raising of the houses and all that. Shannon and Bruce, in your, in your professional opinions, does this development and everything you both have worked on with the applicant, would it um, would it increase the runoff into those other developments?
Um, I'll speak for for myself, Mr. Seer can address this based on a, my understanding of calculations, elevations and documentation provided, understanding that they have also, the applicant has a licensed engineer that has signed and stamped the drainage design and the uh, and the plans we we have reviewed. I I believe that the information presented this evening is accurate. So.
I agree with that, Shannon. Again, this is, this is Bruce here. Um, drainage, drainage calculations are done in such a way where there's many uh, uh, factors of safety built into it. And with that, we have, we have reviewed the drainage calcs and at this time, they 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 do meet all of the the regulations.
Thank you, Shannon and Bruce. Um, I don't have any further questions at this time.
And what, how are you feeling about a possible vote on this project?
Like Patrick, I just have to see how the rest of this meeting goes.
All right. Thank you. Um, that's fair. That's fine. Uh, Ben Scott, you're next.
Yeah, I don't have any additional questions. I think um, Patrick and Mike hit on a lot of good ones. Um, but I too, I'm going to toe the party line here and say, I'd like to hear the rest of the questions before I determine whether I'm ready to vote or not, because I'm sure the rest of the commission has some good questions to throw out there.
Thank you. And Matt.
I I I'll ask again, maybe in a different way about the about the water, right? Like, that seems to be the big issue for me, right? And providing adequate safeguards for the neighbors. You know, Mr. Panico, you said that that, I I think during your comments, you mentioned that maybe less water would leave the site than it would today, which I just can't wrap my head around that because you're sort of building eleven homes on this site. So can you, can you just walk me through how to think about that?
Sure. So um, in the way, and the reason I say that is, so when we modeled this, um, and this is in the storm water management report, this is what has been reviewed by Bruce and Shannon. Um, we figure out to meet Ziro, which is the basically, and I'm gonna really quickly, because I have it right in front of me. I just want to pull up the storm water management report and run through some of these numbers for you guys so that everybody has a really good understanding and it's, and it's clear. Um, so we have an existing peak flow and a proposed peak flow. Uh, and Shannon, if you want to look at it, I'm on page twenty of the storm water management report, just the summary table there. Um, so the existing peak flow is the amount of water during the peak of the storm that's leaving the site. Um, so in any given storm, two year, five year, ten year, twenty five year, fifty year and a hundred year, that's what we analyze and we look at what the the peak flow is at the worst possible part of the storm, the most water leaving the site. And then we calculate that compared to our proposed development. Now, yes, if we had no detention basins whatsoever and we ran these numbers, you would see a huge increase in the amount of water leaving the site from an existing to a proposed condition. Because of the impervious, because of cutting down trees, uh, and all of those factors. So essentially, what we're doing when we do these designs is we look at what the existing conditions are. And then we, and we model what those existing conditions are. And that's how we get these peak flow numbers for all those different storms in an existing standpoint. After that, we look at the site and we say, all right, so we know that we have all this extra pavement. We have less trees, we need to add a detention basin. So we size the detention basin based on what those existing runoff values are. So that we know how much of that water we need to keep on our site for what amount of time. So that essentially, if, let's say that just from a easy way to think about this, if you have a bucket of water and the bucket of water is dumping downstream, if all of that water normally comes in five minutes, well, we want to make sure that our water comes in ten minutes or longer so that that stream can handle the amount of water that we're going to then put into it. And that's how we meet zero increase and runoff is is we store that water on our site for an extended period of time uh, in these detention basins or in all different sorts of ways. Um, to make sure that we have a a negative impact. The requirement is to be at zero or less. So as you can see from this table that Shannon has on the screen, um, the design point A is the design point that uh, everybody is can, is really concerned with with, which is the northwest corner. Um, where all of our basins, where the wetlands kind of converge into that little section. Um, so you can see that we have a reduction from the two year storm all the way through the hundred year storm. Um, and then reducing a total at the hundred year storm of about six cubic feet per second of water. Um, so that's the required amount. And this is where normally we stop the design, we say, okay, everything is good, it works perfect. Um, so what we did was we then took that a step further. So as we move down, I'll try to figure out what page it is, Shannon. Um, so we can look at, I guess, the hundred year storm since that's what we're talking about, uh, page twenty eight in the report. So on this page, you can see some of those numbers that we've been talking about, those those peak runoff numbers, peak flow numbers. You see, we have an existing, an E one, which is the existing uh, number for drainage area one. Uh, and then we have a total P one, which is the drainage area, all of drainage area P one, which is a couple of different areas after they've gone through the basins. So without getting, once again, trying not to get too technical here, as long as E one is higher than P one, you've met Zira. Um, you'll also see in this report, we have a a volume number. So that volume number is is calculating the total cubic feet of water during the hundred year storm at your peak on under your curve there. So that number, we've now reduced as well. And so when I say that we have a reduction in in total runoff, what I'm saying is that when we look at those two numbers, because so much water is being stored within our basin and not being allowed to leave the site, because a lot of it is now going to infiltrate because it's being forced to sit in that basin for an extended period of time, based on all of those different factors, we actually are reducing the total volume of runoff off the site entirely. And so that's.
That, listen, that all makes sense. Um, I I guess you're asking me to sort of trust these numbers here. Again, it seems like this development will reduce the risk of running water off the property, which again, again, doesn't square for me, but I'm not an expert on this, so um, uh, yeah, again, I'll I'll take this report for for what it is. Uh, again, I'm finding delay here because again, that 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 whole part does, doesn't, doesn't really make sense to me.
This is good.
All right. So um, Matt, the the benchmark is, again, there's a design. Um, there are design standards, there's a licensed engineer to the design and and calculations. We have licensed engineers on staff with the town of Farmington that have reviewed, uneducated engineers reviewed um, these and it's basically, if you take, it is creating a big bathtub. And this is, so this is the detention basin. This is the detention basin, it's a big bathtub or a pool, whatever you, however you want to visualize this. And this outlet control structure is basically a big concrete um, catch basin, for lack of a better word. There's a big concrete catch basin put in in the uh, detention basin to hold the water. This is all the, this is the piping coming in, bringing the water in. And then this catch basin lets the water out. The pipe coming in is a eighteen inch RCP pipe. So it's an eighteen inch diameter pipe. But the pipe going out is not this, this catch basin has what we call it, um, there's a orifice, there's a plate that's put in. And so there's a small underdrain uh, pipe that's there so that the basin won't hold water indefinitely. But there's a V notch weir to allow the water out. So if there's a small amount of water in a small storm, then the water is trickling out at this level of the of the plate. And that's how you get these different elevations. The two year storm is only going to get up to elevation one thirty four and point three and so forth. A ten year storm up to uh, three thirty four. And as you come up this weir plate, the opening gets larger and allows more water out. So the flow of water matches or is less than the existing flow. And then you can see there's a spillway right here at the top, right? You can see the schematic. So that's typically when you reach the hundred year storm and that spillway uh, takes place. And it is outletting then uh, through this outlet pipe is a twelve inch RCP. And it's not even a direct discharge out into the wetland. We require that they put it into um, an infiltration galley. And so this water, as it leaves the detention basin, is going to uh, come into the infiltration galley. And then there is stone adjacent to the galley so that it will seep out and take a natural path rather than one point channel. The intent of this is to try to replicate a natural drainage path from the basin back into the wetland and eventually into the water course. So I don't know if that helps anymore, but that's um, that is the standard of design that has been used for years. Um, it it's not a town of Farmington, it's not even a state of Connecticut, it is. Uh, it it's how detention basins are designed in the United States.
Matt, was this helpful? I feel like we lost everyone.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, listen, it makes sense. It's us do doing something to that reduces the water just again, doesn't conceptually make sense, but I I believe everything everyone is telling me. So thank you.
Uh, how, are you, you going with the rest of the crew? How are you feeling about voting today or do you need more time to process?
I'm fine to delay because again, this is a big issue. And if people from the public have any follow up comments from this conversation, I'm comfortable keeping it open.
So it would be us, you you cannot actually talk about it. You you can ask questions to she, to town staff, Shannon?
So.
If we were to delay the vote?
Well, let's, how about we go through everybody and then we'll come back to, I'm happy to have that comfort, but let's.
Yeah, this will be realized.
Because we also, there's another individual that, uh, we've got a public comment, so if we want to entertain that, so, well, let's finish with the commission members.
Yeah, that's fine. Matt, are you all set for now?
I'm good for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. They want to cut you off the third time. All right, uh, Liz, how about you? Uh, questions for the applicant?
Um, no, thanks for the uh, the um, analysis or the explanation, Shannon. Basically, we're slowing the water down so we can seep in as opposed to runoff rapidly. Is that correct?
Eh, in general.
Okay.
In in general, yeah, so um, it will match, the intent is that it will match the flow that was leaving the site. And as um, Mr. Panico said, the measurement, hang on, let me get the right graphic here. His design point, the two design points in the chart, one was, one's here and one's up here in this corner. So it's this, these detention, this detention basin, A and B or one and two. There's an outlet here and an outlet here. And so the idea is that um, the storm water for half the roadway and half the homes comes to the north basin. It uh, drains into the basin, it's held here. And they both have a V notch weir plate in them. And so that same um, thought process that I I just went through is how the water then will hit this um, infiltrator and it'll seep out uh, from this infiltrator into the wetland and then into the water course. So rather than just having a pipe, a straight pipe here in a channel, um, and we didn't, we're, this should help also, it will minimize erosion as well. So rather than a straight pipe, uh, there's a little bit more from a a maintenance standpoint. But yes, the town of Farmington will have to maintain, but it's not um, it it's not an overwhelming maintenance element. Um, it's a concrete box and stone. So it's uh, it's certainly manageable. Does that help, Liz?
Uh, yes, that does. And actually, that was going to be the follow up is the maintenance. And it seems very manageable. It's it's um, not too much of a burden. My one other question is, I think it was in the comments or the letters from the um, the Butters or the neighbors, something about a lot of springs in the area. And is that in the true wetlands areas that where those are underground springs? Uh, because it doesn't, I wouldn't think you'd want to build with springs in that area. Is that correct?
Um, if I were I don't, I do not have the wetlands report memorized. I vaguely recall that being mentioned in the wetlands report. Um, also, it is um, a- as I noted, there's the runoff from twin ponds right uh, through Copper Mine or right the culverts. So twin ponds here to the south, the culvert uh, across Copper Mine and then into this water course to the north. Um, I honestly don't remember verbatim on the uh, wetlands documentation, but no, eh eh, and that's again, why everything's been lifted so that they um, there's been a lot of test pits and a lot of um, monitoring wells installed to understand where not only the groundwater is in a year like this year, right? That it's a drought, it's pretty low. Um, but where's the groundwater in the spring after a s- snow melt? And we've got some rain and that's really what we're trying to understand and what we've, that's the benchmark. We did, we didn't set the benchmark of where's the groundwater now, which is still low even after we've had the four inches of rain last week. It's where's the groundwater in the spring and it's referred to as the seasonal high groundwater. And that's where these have been picked up uh, the homes so that the foundations are up out and not having to have a sump pump so that it's not running all the time. Will some of these foundations have water with, and the drains run in the spring? Absolutely. I'm not saying that these foundation drains are not going to run. I don't think there's an engineer around that'll say those drains won't run. Even the water that just hits and runs down the side of the house is going to get picked up by those foundation drains and and pulled away. But they should not, based on our understanding of the testing done and the information provided and the change in the grades, these should not be running twenty four seven.
Uh, it seems very thorough, very, very well thought out and um, uh, I think that's my questions. Uh, it is a lot to handle, so I'm on the fence about deciding tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mike Walsh, questions?
Uh, yeah, Shannon, more of a clarification. You talked about this earlier. Both detention ponds, when they discharge the wetlands, will flow down towards twin ponds. Is that a true statement?
Uh, no, no, sorry, it flows north. So twin ponds uh, is to our south.
Yep.
So twin ponds is here, this flows north. And the detention basins will flow um, in an easterly-ish direct, or sorry, westerly direction into this water course and the wetlands and this all runs north. In an easterly-ish, sorry, westerly direction into this water course and the wetlands and this all runs north. So this all runs north into this red coat and Whispering Rod neighborhood. So it, it specifically, Mr. Seer and I walked it, so it, it, we walked this whole thing. It crosses here, Whispering Rod, comes across, crosses into Red Coat. And we, we walked it this far. We, we walked this neighborhood behind, but it, it does, it continues off. And crosses Plainville Avenue. And it ends up, I believe Burlington, I think it ends up in Bridgehampton, if I remember correctly. Comes all the way over, yup. Bridgehampton, all the way back through and into the Farmington River.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Just looking for that clarification of directional flow.
You bet, yup. From the south to the north.
Anything else, Mike?
That was it.
All right, thank you. And Matthew?
Uh, so the question I have is, is it possible to know the, the molting elevation of the nearby neighborhood? On Whispering Road and Red Coat Lane? If they have. Basements that are lower than a molting elevation, we're going to have a very similar situation to what we require the sump pumps for on the proposed. Is, is that a possible thing we could know from the engineer?
So you're, basically you're asking what the, roughly what the groundwater table likely is on Red Coat Lane? Uh, my, my best guess, without looking at a whole lot of anything out there is that yes. Almost all of those houses are probably below seasonal high groundwater. And I simply only say that because of the wetland elevation. If you look at where, what the elevations are out there, where the wetlands are. Basically that a lot of that was probably built on top of. Some wetland areas. There's a lot of streams that run right along the backs of properties and through properties and. A lot of wetlands directly behind them. It's likely that. That finger of wetlands that we're seeing on this project that carries north probably used to continue to carry north. And then over time, at some point it was filled in and the houses were built there. So. That is likely a good, a, a, a good cause and good reason why. There is water issues and some pump issues on some of those properties. It's. When the houses were built, they didn't necessarily, as Shannon said, they didn't use the same kind of strategies and the same. Factor for the same things that we do today. So.
Shannon, can you put that, the wetlands overlay back on? I'm curious how that looks in comparison to the northern section here.
I'm sorry, you want this one?
I know the, the overlay layer on the GIS.
Certainly.
Right, so you can see a lot of the houses there are actually encroached upon through the wetlands right there. And, and the similar scenario is true for that corner of Red Coat Lane. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I do not have any new questions. The public hearing though is open and we have someone else.
There is another hand raised, so. Jackie O'Keefe, if you'd like to. Unmute your microphone and address the commission, please.
Everyone, thank you so much for taking my comment. I'm standing here with my husband Eric. We live at forty-four Red Coat Lane. You can see our property abuts that northwest retention pond there. And we do have some major concern with the runoff. That is proposed with this plan. I'd like to hand you over to my husband Eric.
Um, thank you very much. We've switched to the laptop. I appreciate everybody's time and length tonight in listening to everybody's concerns. I cannot overstate how much I appreciate your consideration of this. In listening to the recent comments here, I have a very large concern which causes to raise our hand. Specifically, we're talking about the outlet. In the northern section of the property. That directly abates our property. And I know we're taking in consideration future families moving in future homes. But right now we're talking about. Mr. Calco's interest versus the O'Keefe interest. We're talking about the, the words used here were the blowout. From that retention pond. Right? Is quote unquote manageable. But there's no definitions of what those are. There's no securities put into our property directly across the line of the blowout. And we're talking about a line on a piece of paper. I'm talking about the fact that we have children in the school system here. We are raising our family here and we plan to be here for a long time. One hundred year storm event in the past decade has turned into multiple hundred year storm events across our country. There's no guarantees. Anywhere that I've heard from any speaker. That we're not looking at the direct causality of something on one property directly potentially having. I'm sorry. But the blowout from the north. Retention pond could have a direct causal effect. To potentially ruining the property value of our home. In the past few years, we've already incurred over ten thousand dollars of direct damages from water table problems. In a time period when we've had high water tables and low water tables and all of those things. These are direct costs incurred to us as a homeowner. In this community. And again, I, I can't overstate how much I appreciate the commission listening to our concerns. But the reality is, as a homeowner in this area, I've heard nothing to. Quell my concerns. Quite to the contrary, I've, I've heard a couple of red flags raised here in terms of the fact of this thing. This is new information to us that we have a blowout directly aimed at our home. Before we had conjected that we were sort of in the. Line of sights or in the aim of where any potential overflow would come, but to hear the confirmation. From this committee's discourse is beyond concerning to us. And so again, I would just. Strongly appeal to the commission to consider the fact of. One small miscalculation here with no assurances to the homeowners can. Can, will directly affect one homeowner for sure. And I don't know what the cost value equation is, but to me, if it affects one other homeowner. That's too much of an effect. And we're looking at multiple homeowners who've all expressed their concerns and raised the red flag that. We are telling you as a community that we are past the point where we can sustain any more pressure. We cannot sustain any more possibility of any more pressure. We're already. Well, not, no pun intended, we're already literally underwater here. And from what I'm learning just now in the last hour and a half of discourse is, is that there are, and there have been. Thoughts and ideas expressed during the course of this. And to Calico's credit, like, they've done a lot of research on this. But it's never come up to the public that there are these other potential things affecting the other potential properties. And I feel that that's been hidden from us. And at the very minimum, this should have much more consideration, if not an immediate vote tonight. To say that it does not sustain the rest of the community that has a vested interest. So thank you very much for taking my comment.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. O'Keefe. Is there anyone else, Shannon?
No, there are no other hand raised.
Shannon?
Yes.
If, if you don't mind, if Mr. O'Keefe could explain what he feels as though was hidden, I just want to make sure we address his concerns.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Keefe, if he's, is he still on?
Well.
Uh, hang on.
Yep.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I don't know if they're still there. I don't, Mr. O'Keefe.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Panico, if you can expand on.
Whatever you felt as though was hidden, or I just want to make sure that the concern. I, I don't know if it was a misunderstanding, the, the outlets of those ponds. Are the, are the opposite of a blowout. So I want to make sure that, one, we address that concern and two. You mentioned that you felt like there were some other things that you heard tonight that you felt as though were hidden from the public. And I just want to make it very clear that this set of plans. It was exactly the same set of plans with the exception of the road being slightly higher. And no longer needing footing drains than this, as the set of plans that was submitted to wetlands and presented to wetlands. So I just want to make sure that if there, whatever other concerns there are, I can address those the best I can for you.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate the concern. During all of our discourse in the wetlands commissions. I feel and our neighbors have expressed. That we have tried to address the concerns for things that can happen to adjoining properties. And. Very clearly put by some of my neighbors. We were felt, we were made to feel that that was not a concern in order to get to the wetlands commission. Now, the word used here. And to use a loose legal term. We cannot put the stuff back in a cow once it has come out. Blowout is a strong word. And at minimum, I think that. This commission should take a period to consider that strongly. As it was not the words used by you. But it was the words used and assumed. In this discourse. That raises a major red flag as during the whole wetlands commission hearing, I never heard the term blowout. I never heard the term overflow. I never was explained to me that. I'm the one that looks at the map and says, boy, I'm kind of at the choke point here. And my wife and I have discussed it many times that our concern is extremely high. As, as we expressed in the wetlands commission, we have already dealt with flooding issues in our yard. We've had repairs made to our pool that you can clearly see in the picture. That did not stand up to any type of extra pressure from any type of water flow. Our neighbors have raised the alarms that they have high water problems. And when we're now talking about blowouts and potential things, we've always been given assurances that we've. Quote unquote, I'm sorry, well, I'm not going to quote unquote, Brian. But we have been given the words that we hope and it's our intention and we wish and we want. We've never been given the insurances that as a community we've asked for. We've asked for, we want to understand that no harm will be done. Not that we hope no harm will be done. We have asked for the fact that if harm is done, who is accountable? Is it the construction company? Is it the owner and developer or is it the city? Because we feel as a community, harm is going to be done. And we feel as a community that once this project is approved. We have no discourse. The only way we have to protect ourselves is by voicing our opinions. As loudly as we can to our commission and to our direct representatives that we're saying, please help us here. Give us some relief. It started with asking for less properties for just less exposure to risk. And all we've been told is, is that it will be minimized. The number of trees will be small. The amount of runoff will be minimal. The amount of impact will be light. We've never been told zero. We've never been told, hey, you guys are safe. And even when I asked in the wetlands commission, nobody was able to give assurances. Nobody was able to say anything definitively that we're going to be okay. If this community is given an assurance. That we are going to be okay and when we're not, that we have some sort of outlet. Not necessarily to seek damages, but if it goes that far to seek damages. Then this community is going to embrace it. But we're not given any of that stuff, so therefore we don't embrace it. And that's all we've asked for. So when we hear words like blowout and I'm sitting in my house where I have to raise my kids for the next ten years. That raises a red flag and it gives me an emotional response that's not comfortable. That I shouldn't have in my own home. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that. Because, you know, the, the design of these. Systems.
Brian, I'm going to put you two minutes, please.
Yup, absolutely. Is, is the opposite of a blowout. The, these infiltration level spreaders are designed. To make the water flowing out of them. Gentle and very, and very, very minimal in comparison to just having a culvert or a flared end. And that's, that was done to protect the wetlands so we don't create erosion. So in no time should this create a blowout effect or. Something that's blasting water into the wetlands. That's why the basins have been sized as large as they have. And as designed, and we have said, as designed with all of the safety factors, all of the design work that we've done. Everybody who's reviewed this plan, I think everybody is very comfortable with the fact that this. The, the runoff from this site will not negatively affect the downstream neighbors. There is a whole watershed. And, and quite a, in an entire pond just to the south of this, if we have a five hundred year storm, no one knows what. That, what that flow is going to happen. And so I think that that's why, you know, when you ask people to, for guarantees. That, you know, you'll never have a water problem again after you've told everyone of continual water problems. People are hesitant to say things like that. But we've spent a lot of time working with town staff and a, and a lot of engineers and a lot of professionals to make sure that it won't be the runoff. From this site that is causing any negative impact to the properties downstream.
Thank you. Thank you. A lot, a lot definitely has been covered. This is Inez St. James. I personally did not hear the word blowout. I guess it's telling me it's, you know, after ten o'clock. Yeah, you know, we are dealing with a special permit application. It is a process that our town has. So that we could hold the public hearings like we are today. And we as volunteers from many different walks of life and professions. Can listen and read as well regulations, listen to the applicants and concerned citizens. This is a private property. This property does comply with the standards. For the subdivision, but again, we do have a process in place for special applications. And we look at the character of the neighborhoods. We look at traffic. We look at public services. So I think the discussion was wonderful. It is a lot of information to, for us to process. And there are definitely some last minute things that need to be looked at and considered. My recommendation is that we. Continue with this public hearing till next time.
And, and, yeah, if the commission.
Hello, it's not my only vote. Excuse me, thank you. If the commissioners agree with me, obviously. Should we just do a roll call or?
Do a roll call or, or just a motion if everyone's?
Yeah, if everyone is in agreement, just a motion if, if, or I can just go one by one and you tell me yes or no for continuation. Let's just do it that way. Go ahead. I thought somebody, okay, nevermind. Patrick, yay, nay?
Yeah, no, I'm comfortable continuing. There's a lot of information here and I definitely respect that and, and. I want all the commissioners to feel comfortable. So yes, I, I am comfortable with that.
Thank you. Mike?
Fine with the continuation.
Thank you. Scott?
I am off the fence now. I'm fine continuing it.
Thank you. Matt?
Yes, I, I am. Thank you.
And Liz?
Yes, we should do a continuance.
All right, and Mike and Matthew are not voting this evening. So, all right, so we need a motion? And a second to continue. And what are the instructions, Shannon?
So if you. As you're thinking about this, if you have questions and can't find information or need additional information or something, commission members come up, then please. Direct your email to me only. I wait, there will be no. I wait, there will be no group emails once, if this is continued, there can be no discussion about this in between meetings, um, no discussion with anyone of the public, direct them to me or Bruce or our office. Um, and if there's, as you're, again, as you're looking at this and synthesizing, any clarification or additional information, um, that's needed, please get it to me. If there's something all of a sudden you think about, you want from the applicant, again, get it to me, we will relay it to the applicant with the intent that, um, you know, this gets, you know, you, if you want the applicant to respond, we got to be able to give them to some time. So you can't email me the Friday before the meeting and expect to have new information on the 26th. So, uh, be mindful of that. But all, all dialogue is to go through this office for any information that's needed.
Thank you. So we need a motion and a second to continue this public hearing to September 26th, please.
Okay, so I have to, I have to put that date in there, September 26th?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to continue the application, uh, am I saying application or public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll start over. Okay, so make the motion to continue the application by Calco Construction, Inc., for a special permit for an 11 lot, an 11 lot cluster subdivision at 168 Coppermine Road in an R30 zone until September 26th, 2022.
Great. Second, please.
Scott.
Scott, I think it.
Yep, good. Thank you, Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sounded unanimous. All right, awesome. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so we're done with public hearings, and then we have an informal discussion, or is that happening today?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna muscle through, because I don't.
Do you want to do that, Shannon, or would you rather?
Yeah, we got it. You got five minutes.
All right, I got you.
It better be your best five minutes.
No pressure, no pressure.
I'll be very, very short and sweet. Uh, we're basically, um, this is a property, uh, 528 Plainville Avenue. Um, we are basically just looking for the commission's opinion and, uh, just general feelings. This is an R40 zone, um, and Mr. Sanis from Calco, uh, once again, this is another one of his properties, and he's considering doing an active adult community here. Um, so anybody's not familiar with the area, this is directly south of, of Tam Bark there, or, um. Uh, yeah, of Tam Bark Trail, uh, and then to the south of that is Autumn Estates, which is another active adult community. Um, so we, there, this is 20 units, um, and then we would be deeding about 4.1 acres of open space, um, along with, with that. So it's an 11.6 acre parcel, um, so about a third, a little less, a little more than a third of it would be deeded as open space, which is pretty much everything, um, to the west. Uh, and it's kind of a very similar, uh, design as kind of what we just kind of looked at. We have a small, we have a cul-de-sac that runs through the center, uh, freestanding single-family active adult homes off either side, cul-de-sac at the end, storm drainage before the wetlands feeding the wetlands. Um, so once again, just looking for the commission's input and opinion as to what their thoughts are. Uh, as I did mention, um, there is directly to the south of this an active adult, and Tan Bark is directly to the north. So we felt as though, um, utilization of, of this being, uh, active adult, continuing the active adult would be a good fit. Um, and, you know, the less density, keeping the rear, uh, yards toward either of these two developments kind of created, creates a little bit of a buffer on a transition between the two. Um, so anybody's input thoughts?
So to get into the community, there's just one way in and out? You're not cutting through Tam Bark, right?
No, correct. So it would just be one access, uh, proposed off of Plainville Avenue. Yep, uh, we will get, there's a sewer that runs through this property from Tan Bark to the property to the south, so that would be utilized. Um, but that would, that's the only connection between any of the three properties.
That, I, I don't mean to just, it's in a model of my mind, the houses that are on Plainville Avenue, they will be torn down?
Correct. Yep, so, yep.
Okay.
Uh, one house and some outbuildings and a barn, I think, some.
And, uh, you know, based on a similar subdivision north, I think it's north, I don't know, of here, you know, I think they have a waiting list. Uh, so that type of housing or south, south of here, okay. Um, yeah, south.
That's okay.
What Shannon says. Uh, I mean, yes, we definitely have a need of this type of housing in town. Um, will you guys be able to finish Tan Bark? I, and, and I don't mean to be flit, but it, it just doesn't, uh, look like it's finished, you know, like just the entrance of it. Will, will you be able to wrap that up before this one? I know what you're talking to us.
Before this, before this project? I'm sure, um, and I know John's still on, but I'll answer for him. I'm sure that, um, he would most likely have Tam Bark finished before, um, this, this would be finished. But, um, uh, I think, I know that in our, in the design and, and as part of that active adult and everything, you know, the entrance is, is very critical. And so we had already talked about doing, uh, some nice landscape berms and some nice landscaping out front there, especially to shield those first two units from, uh, Plainville Ave anyway. So that might be a good opportunity for him to extend some of that into Tan Bark, uh, et cetera, and try to kind of tie the two together, uh, not necessarily from a use perspective, but visually kind of complete that strip. Because Autumn Estates has a nice entrance, he finishes a nice entrance at Tan Bark. Uh, if this had a, you know, more appeal from that street, I think it would be a nice feature.
Thank you. And go ahead, commissioners. Patrick?
Uh, yeah, I think you pretty much said it. I think it, just by looking at it, looks very tight. You got one behind the other one there. Um, is this a town? Would this be a town road or would this be a, a private road?
No, this would all be private.
Okay. Um, but anyways, my comments, I'm, I'm just basically throwing it out there, obviously. It's, it's, you know, just, it's black and white. Um, I do know that these projects with this type of, uh, spacing in between can be done correctly, or, or they can be done to look really good. Um, I would, my opinion would be to, when you are bringing it to the commission, definitely include some renderings and, and kind of show what you think it would look like, you know, um, in terms of landscaping, uh, because that really does help to, uh, to sell the project, we put it that way.
Yep.
Thanks, Patrick. How about you, Mike?
Um. Nope, nothing to really add.
All right. Um, Scott?
Now, I agree, you know, with what's been said so far. I think there's, there is demand. I'm interested in seeing more.
Matt?
No questions.
All right. How about you, Liz?
Uh, is this across from Farmington Memorial Forest? That, in that area? Other side of the street?
Here's the aerial, here's the, here's the property. So there's adjacent, there's properties, the memorial forest is behind.
Okay, okay, I thought that. Um, no, I'm, I'm curious to know, learn more.
All right, thank you. How about you, Mike Walsh?
Uh, nothing to add.
Thank you. And Matthew?
I just want to echo what Patrick said, a rendering here would definitely tie this whole thing together, uh, present a nice package.
Yeah. It, I definitely agree too. That's, I'm a visual person, so I, we always make, um, Shannon do the GIS, and I have to see it, feel it, whatever. So, yeah, it would definitely be helpful. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
When, when are you, when are you thinking of coming with this budget? This year or next year?
For, for this project?
Yeah.
Um, the, this wouldn't be started till next year.
All right.
We might start in-house design stuff or trying to get some of the information like you just talked about, uh, renderings, figure out exactly how we want it to look, some of that stuff now. Uh, but, uh, most likely, John would want it to be able to start this, Calco, they'd want to start this, you know, maybe in the springtime, once they wrap up, uh, some, something else.
Well, thank you for the heads up and letting us know. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Have a good night.
Yeah.
You as well. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to defer Shannon to next time?
I can't for some of this. So, uh, so hang on, folks, because we've got a few, uh, planners report items, and I promise to be keenless with us. So they, what I have to get through is at least the, um, are wayfinding signs with, uh, and I gotta open up the right one here. There you go. All right, so we're going to jump into Unionville. And we are at the intersection of New Britain Avenue and 177. Take us there on the GIS. Um, if you had, if, if you got that far in the agenda review, then thank you. If you didn't, I understand. Um, but the pocket park that we are talking about is located, uh, right here at 75, um, South Main Street at the corner of New Britain and, and 177, just south of the bridge. And it's the remnant land, the liquor store had been here, liquor store has moved across the street. Um, it's the remnant land that's left over from the widening and intersection work that was done with this, the whole, uh, enhancement project, uh, that brought us from this intersection into the center of Unionville. And so what we end up with then is a piece of property that looks like this, right? We've got our right turn lane now on New Britain Avenue. Um, the bridge is over here now on, uh, Plan Right, and a nice big radius to, uh, make that turn a little better from New Britain Avenue onto 177 North. Currently, there's a sidewalk that's cut through that property. Um, and what we did is we both, um, Rose Ponti, our director of economic development, and Bruce Seer, uh, who had joined us earlier this evening, uh, with his bicycle advisory committee, have been collaborating to work on wayfinding signs, uh, and enhancements for this particular area. Uh, we did preliminary conversations with Unionville Historic District and the Architectural Design Review Committee last fall. Unionville Historic District, because we are in Unionville, and they, they provide a nice historic aspect to some of these things and perspective that we need sometimes for some of this work. And the Architectural Design Review Committee, because this is located in the Unionville Center, uh, Unionville Village Zone. Um, and they are, uh, an advisory committee technically to TPZ, but the architects and landscape architects, uh, wanted their input from a, a design charrette. So we had one meeting with both groups. It was, uh, quite entertaining. The meeting minutes are attached, uh, were attached as part of all the documentation that was sent out to you folks and that SharePoint link. So since then, Rose has worked diligently and secured a grant from AARP, $19,000, and she has an additional $10,000, uh, allocated in her budget for improvements for this pocket park. So again, as I mentioned, if you've been, uh, walking through Unionville, you'll know there's a cut-through sidewalk here, and there are two, uh, benchmarkers, uh, kind of placeholders. Um, so we've gone ahead, we've ordered the benches and bike rack, they're the standard black powder coated benches that we've got, uh, in the downtown area. Bike rack is going to be the same, black, it's a five, five-slot bike rack. Um, and then.
Can it be green?
No. No, it's going to be black. The benches and the bike rack are going to be black. Um, I know. And so then, uh, Rose has been working, um, with a sign vendor to come up with some ideas for a kiosk, and the kiosk is going to go here in the center. Um, the hexagon pattern evolved from, we wanted an access direct from the intersection. So folks walking or biking the bike trail crossing on 177 is just up here, Plan, Plan Left, coming into the center of, uh, Unionville, Plan Right. So we wanted to make sure that anyone coming from the bike trail would be able to come right in, or even our neighbors from, uh, say New Horizons, if they were coming in and wanted to check out this area or relax in this area, they had immediate access. Um, but we also need to make sure then we had ADA access around the kiosk. So we started with all sorts of patterns, and then we landed on the hexagon as a nod to the Upton Nut.
Okay.
Uh, factory, uh, the industrial factory from years past. So, um, and we're hoping to have a little bit of detail so that from an aerial standpoint, that that will kind of pop for us a little bit. So that's how that evolved, and it's needed, something is needed anyhow in order to maintain the ADA accessibility. So we figured why not a hexagon. Kiosk, um, has evolved, there's been planning studies, a number of things done. Um, again, if you had a chance to flip through, you'll see some of the things that, uh, were considered. We've already met, had a second meeting with Unionville Historic District last third, two Thursdays ago, week and a half ago, uh, at this point. Um, they surprised, I, you know, you never know. I, I, I had my engineering hat on, wasn't crazy about the bridge topper, the Unionville Historic District Commission across the board likes the bridge topper on the kiosk. Um, we are recommending some just dimensional, slight dimensional changes to make this from a scale, uh, more readily accessible for all users. Um, there's a QR code that will bring up a map of Unionville that ties to Rose's Explore Farmington page that links then to all the businesses and local points of interest that are on Rose's Explore Farmington page. Um, and so that's kind of a schematic of what that would look like, um, obviously not with the hex that, that evolved, uh, after this. Um, and then there are wayfinding signs that are going to be mounted on, uh, black poles to match the ornamental light poles that are already in Farmington, and it, the base, the pole itself will, um, all look like the ornamental light poles. So there'll be some uniformity, um, and, uh, that, that crisp, black, sleek, uh, so it doesn't stand out, but the information signs are there. So the wayfinding signs are going to be located, uh, as the trail comes into 177, um, and then crosses. So this is, this wayfinding sign will be located up, um, further south where the trail comes into 177, not actually at the ped button, there's really no room for it here, and this is really the more appropriate place if somebody's trying to decide, am I going further south? Am I going to cross or am I, or sorry, north, uh, south, or am I going to cross? And the same, this wayfinding sign will be located, um, at the juncture, um, at the trail and a little back from the intersection. That way, two people have time to make a decision. There will also be a QR code on the post so they can have the opportunity to scan it and bring up a map at that point. And this way, they're not right up on the street, uh, doing all of that. So it gives a little bit of space and a little bit of safety measure. So the, um, benches and, and bike rack are, are traditional public amenities, those have actually been ordered, uh, as I mentioned in the, the write-up, uh, with the grant. Uh, as with anything, uh, there's rights and responsibilities, this grant is no different. Um, the intent is to have the money used by the end of the year, if possible, and then a, um, ribbon cutting in, um, November, uh, if we can do it. Um, Rose has already been in touch with AARP. If we need to push it, we can. Um, but my point, uh, for bringing it to your attention this evening, one is it's a, it's right in the center of Unionville. Um, you are the Plan and Zoning Commission and should be equally aware as our Unionville Historic and, uh, ADRC boards. And if I, I don't, I think these are all public amenities, they're wayfinding signs, they aren't something typical that would, um, even the kiosk is really going to be wayfinding, it's, uh, no different than we have on our, our rails to trails, just providing, um, more points of interest. I don't believe it rises to a site plan level, but certainly if, um, you folks feel a site plan applications warranted, we will, we will do so. But this, uh, this encompasses, um, the next phase of some amenities for the center of Unionville. So if anyone has any comments, questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So I was going to ask you about the bridge, but it's too late for that. But anyway, I think it's great. It would be neat to have more of these throughout town, right?
Well, that's the idea, is that this is the first, you know, we had a nice location with the pocket park right there in the remnant land. Um, in this, this juncture at 177 is highly used, so the bicycle advisory committee, so like, yes, the intent is that this would start to grow from here, certainly the wayfinding signs. this would start to grow from here, certainly the wayfinding signs. Um, the kiosk, there's already some informational ones along the rails to trails, but there's probably an opportunity in Farmington Center for one.
Yeah, this is good. And I think it ties in the, across the bit, you know, the, the, the bridge, community, you know, right? Yeah, I think it's awesome. Bob, everybody else, though, Patrick, like, you like the idea and you, you're okay with Shannon handling this on our behalf or Towns' behalf?
Yes, and actually, I I love the idea. Yeah, I know, I've been driving through Unionville for twenty-two years now, and and it's nice, you know, it, everything is gonna help. Um, um, and, yeah, no, it's exciting to see.
Cool. Mike?
Well, looks good. I know some business owners in Unionville have been waiting for this, so it's, uh, it's nice to see. Thank you.
All right, Scott, you're good with, uh, our boss Shannon handling this?
A hundred percent. I think it's great, and as the bike path gets more and more used, it's all, all the better.
All right. How about you, Matt?
No, agree. It looks great. Just, just quick, is there lighting there now, or will there be new lighting?
No, we're not gonna light these, um.
Is it like, like at night, like if you're walk, is there already?
No, you're not, because, um, one, you've got all the businesses, so you've got the lights from the businesses. There's a street light here.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and and the rails to trails dawn to dusk. So, you know, no, it's not going to be lit, but there's plenty of ambient light that it's not going to be a security concern either.
But I was thinking of people wa- like, you know, walking, making it more walkable, but if there's enough light or anything.
It's already there. I mean, the sidewalks are already there, and the sidewalk just arches right through, kinda right near. So, no, we're good.
Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. How about you, Liz?
I think it's a great idea, and it looks good, cool concept, and you can handle it, Shannon. I have faith in you.
Mike Walsh?
Uh, I think it looks great. You guys did a good job, Shannon.
Thanks.
And Matthew?
Agree with everyone else. Looks great.
All right, we'll proceed.
You go, Shannon.
Eight, eight R C on Thursday night, and then, uh, Rose will breathe a sigh of relief. And, uh, we'll get everything, uh, then, then everything else will get ordered. Right now, it's just the benches and bike rack, but everything else will get ordered after I I finish with A D R C on Thursday. So, great, thank you, everyone. Um, accessory apartments.
Mm-hmm.
There was a, uh, file folder, uh, in the SharePoint link that had an accessory apartment. It had a number of regulations uh, for adjoining communities, and then there is an Excel file spreadsheet. If it's gonna open, I don't even know if I have Excel on this. Oh, here we go. I do. Um, but it it basically provided a a bit of a summary. Um, I am not given the hour. We are not gonna go through this, but the point, um, is that it's a resource for you folks and to start to think about it, and as you have time, start to look at this. Are there things that we want to change with Farmington's accessory apartment regulation? And this is what our adjoining communities are doing and how they stack up. So Garrett put together the summary spreadsheet for us uh, and tracked down those regulations. So they're there, and we can continue to just kind of keep it on as a maintenance discussion item.
Yeah.
Um, and see if it's something that we feel needs to be tackled, and if, uh, uh, a change actually needs to be made, or if we look at everything and decide, you know what? We're comfortable and we want to stand where we are, that's okay too, that we're not forced to make a change. Um, but the information is there. Um, and so, and obviously, as you're going through, if there's questions, comments, find an error in the chart, then we, we misread something, uh, feel free to let us know. So there's that. Um, the opt-outs, uh, that we had done in the summer and June and July.
Yeah.
Uh, for the parking, uh, the parking requirement for multifamily dwellings and for the accessory apartment, uh, mandate from the state. The opt-outs go to town council tomorrow night. So I will be at the town council meeting tomorrow night to answer any questions, if they have any. The same summary that was provided to all of you has been provided to the town council members in preparation for that meeting. Uh, you probably, if you subscribe to Everbridge and you got an email of the town council agenda, then you will see it all as part of the package that went to town council uh, at the end of last week. And the final item, I'm gonna keep on trucking.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Um, nineteen Perry Street, uh, AKA Charles House, the development next to Union School, um, is on my agenda for Thursday evening with the A D R C, um, committee, uh, for a review. Why, here we go, sorry. I'm driving and talking at the same time. Um, so Union School, the Charles House, nineteen Perry Street. Um, it's to A D R C for review of two buildings, uh, the frontage building, which they refer to as Building One, that fronts right in parallels along Perry Street, that has the condominium units for purchase. And the redevelopment of this building, which is referred to as the powerhouse building. So that's on, uh, review, uh, for review with, um, A D R C on this Thursday evening um, as part of preparation for, um, them coming in for building permit for those two parcels, or for those two buildings, excuse me. Um, i- unless they change something from a site plan standpoint, it will not be coming back to TPZ. One of the conditions at A D R C from two thousand fifteen, when this was approved, is that when they advanced to final sign-in for building permit, they had to come back to A D R C to review the final construction details, because A D R C will look at, um, all the trim, all the door styles and window styles, and the actual materials being used for siding and brick and any accents and details, which it just, um, understandably, at the time in two thousand fifteen, hadn't, uh, the design hadn't elevated to that level of detail. They were all schematic drawings. So it was approved with the condition that it come back and go through those details prior to building permit. Um, at the same time, and in a parallel track, the, um, developer who's, um, involved with the the bank with respect to this property is continuing to move through, uh, DEP and work on the remediation efforts. They have submitted, um, their environmental, it's the EC part two, and I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, it's Environmental Control Plan Part Two. Um, and it's part of a multi-step process with DEP, so that is continuing to advance as well. Um, that is all I have from a planner's report standpoint. I just blew through everything. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them or email me at at any point, and I can, or call me. I'm happy to chat with anybody at any point.
Any burning questions for Shannon?
Uh, it's getting late. Mine can wait. I'll, I'll email. I did have one on the building, the condominiums or whatever, but I'll email you separately on that.
All right, that's fair.
Okay. So, all right, before I let you go, we need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July, July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second?
Please stand for a second.
Woo-hoo. All right, ten thirty-eight, meeting adjourned.
Oh, no. Vote on the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Shannon, and good night, everyone, and get ready for October.